Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight for our January 10th or Swetman meeting. We have just closed an executive session for the purpose of discussing multi-district litigation relative to per and calling for Alhaid Substance Pitas in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A Section 21A3 and further to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or other acquisition of rail property in 64 Wildwood Street in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A Section 21A6 as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of town as determined by the chairman. I'd ask y'all now to please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, it's the transmitting of treasury warrants. We will start with number 25.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous, number 25A.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Number 26.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? 26A.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? 27.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? 27A.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? 28.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And 28A.
So moved.
Second.
Next, we have the approval of minutes from November 29, 2022.
So moved.
Any discussion on that? Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Approved. All right, we're going to head into appointments. Prior to doing so, I would like to ask anybody speaking to just lower your mask so you can speak, so you can be heard clearly. Thank you. Our first appointment is Joseph Desmond Police Chief Sergeant Matt Stavro and Department Historian Paul Shalifor, announcement of plans to commemorate the police department's 150th anniversary. Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you and good evening to you as well. We know you've got a busy schedule tonight, but we do appreciate the opportunity for us to come here and let you know, although not quite as old as the library, we are also 150 years old this year. And we have some things planned and we just kind of want to make you aware of. We did have sort of a contest where we asked residents to develop patch that we were going to wear for the entire year. We'll get to that in a second because the young lady that designed the patch is here tonight and we want to recognize her as well because it was a really good job, as hopefully you can see. And we have patches for everyone as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt and just going to hit some highlights of our history and then we'll get into some of the things we have planned for this year.
Great.
Thank you to Paul Shalifor. He's compiled a lot of this information for us and without him, we wouldn't have the era that we have. A brief history of the police department. The police department was founded in 1872 and the first officer was Abe Porter Pearson who lived on Andover Road. First payment to an officer was $4 in 1875. The town spent a whopping $3 on badges that year. In 1884, the first lockup was built by the town for $300. In 1888, the town spent $50 for police services for the apprehension and conviction of burglars who broke in and entered the dwelling houses around Silver Lake. The first chief of police was appointed in 1893 and the town authorized to pay him $17 a year back then. Yes. The first uniformed chief was in 1903, Chief William Swain. The town paid for a coat and a helmet, $12 for him. This was the first indication of a uniformed officer in the town. In 1904, the town authorized a telephone to be placed in his house so that people could actually call him. In 1912, officers started wearing uniforms. In 1915, 15 years before we got our first police car, we had our first recorded arrest for violation of the new automobile laws. And in 1920, we had our first recorded drunk driving arrest. It wasn't until 1930 that we appointed our first regular police officers, Albert Butters and Harold Locke. At that point, we had three full-timers, one chief, two officers, and 20 special police officers. The town also purchased a 1930 Ford sedan. It was our first cruiser. It had the letters WPD on it and was equipped with a spotlight and a siren. In 1935, we got a radio to receive calls in that car. If you needed help, information was telephoned to the state police barracks in North Reading, who in turn teletyped a message to state police headquarters in Framingham, who would then broadcast a message to the Wilmington patrol car. Nothing like today when people get us instantly. By 1940, we consisted of a chief, a deputy chief, a sergeant, two patrolmen, and 20 special officers. In 1942, the deputy chief and the sergeant were making $38 a week and a regular patrolman making $36 a week, working a 48-hour week, having one day off in seven. In 1952, we got two-way radio systems between all town departments and the town began construction on a combined police and fire station to be located on Church Street adjacent to the town's first firehouse. In 1959, the highway garage on Adelaide Street, having offered office lockup and garage space to the police department at various times over the past 30 years, was demolished and a new modern police station was built. In 1960, our first officers went to a police academy, the Massachusetts State Police Academy. In 1961, we completed our new police headquarters. The $75,000 colonial-style building featured abundant office space, modern bathroom, and shower facilities. I'm sure the budget's very close to what you'll be discussing later tonight. In 1965, we got our first Canines, Zip and Roscoe, that were with Officer Jay Palmer and Anthony Langoon. We also created the first lieutenant position at that time when Sergeant John Embimbo was promoted. In 1987, which doesn't seem that long ago, we got our first computer information management system to enhance the department's record-keeping and handwritten and typed daily logs became a thing of the past. In 1995, Wilmington Police Department's 911 system was brought in line, which allowed caller's name and address to be automatically displayed at the police and fire stations. In 1996, we moved to civilian police and fire dispatchers. In 2001, we moved to the current Public Safety Building, which we now occupy. In 2011, the department received state accreditation from the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission. And now in 2021, we're budgeted for 51 officers, a chief, a deputy, five lieutenants, seven sergeants, 37 patrol officers, three clerks, one animal control officer, and one clinician. So 150 years, we've come quite a long way.
And that's just a sampling of some of the things we hope to share with the community during the course of the year. If you've ever had the privilege of reading some of Paul's material on our website, Paul's, you know, knowledge and specifics about the history of this town and this department are incredible and I urge the community to read them. And certainly, as we go further in the year, we'll let you know about any specific plans we have to celebrate and hopefully the community as a whole can celebrate this accomplishment. A lot of years for an organization. We've had ups and downs, but certainly very proud of this organization and we continue to grow. So like I mentioned earlier, we did have sort of a contest where we asked for designs for residents to come in on our patches. We have copies of-- we have some patches to give you right there so you can get a closer look at them.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our plan is to have the officers wear this patch for the remainder of the year and also we have a commemorative badge, which we'll also be wearing, which specifies 150th anniversary. So with that, we would like to-- you want to introduce Ashley?
Yeah. We had this contest. We had over 30 submissions for patches and ranged from young children to adults and it was quite impressive. The department voted on them and we narrowed it down to the top five and the chief ultimately selected this patch, which happened to come from resident Ashley Persico. So we'd like to have her come up so we can publicly acknowledge her and thank her.
We'd like to give you a copy of your own patch. And also this certificate of appreciation for submitting it and appreciate it. It's going to be worn for the whole year and keep safe for many years to come, hopefully. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So with that, we'll open it up to any questions you might have about what our plans are.
Well, I'll start with just saying thank you because that was-- I love hearing the history and that is very impressive. You definitely have come a long way and I think you guys obviously do a great job and I'm appreciative for all you do every day for the town and, you know, I look forward to celebrating, you know, the 150 years. It's definitely something that should be celebrated. You guys do so much for the community besides keeping us safe, so you guys deserve to have a celebration for yourself, so I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate you also and I noticed that while you were speaking, Jeff O was making notes on what you were getting paid. So I assume that he's going to be bringing that up on your next contract and go through it. But seriously, thank you very much. It's exciting to be able to commemorate 150 years in law enforcement in these times that we're in today. And seeing how your department works, you deserve all the accolades you can get or you should receive. And again, I just want to congratulate you all. It was very interesting listening to what you've put together and I congratulate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for the presentation. Happy New Year to each one of you. And thank you. I too enjoyed listening to the history, a lot of the stuff I didn't know, so I look forward to hearing that and more as the year goes on. But congratulations, as has been said, on 150 years. I look forward to another 150 years and I can just say that I'm really grateful for the relationship that your department has with our residents. It's a real positive relationship. I tell people all the time that you guys do your job with a lot of compassion and it's a difficult job to do these days and just so appreciative of the men and women of the Wilmington Police Department to have you here in Wilmington. And also want to thank Ashley and congratulate you. Thank you so much for this.
Great.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If folks could take your masks down, our recording secretary is named Will Herewood. Please take your masks off. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I echo my colleagues' comments and very much appreciate what you do, day in and day out, on behalf of the citizens of this town. We may get calls in other communities as well, where you assist in doing that national night out, all of the things that was at the Santa Parade and everything else that your department does on behalf of the community. Just a question from Paul. I noticed that it was mentioned by Sergeant that the first chief was, what, 1890 or something? But there was no name. Do you have a list of all the names of all the-- because it would really be interesting to see all of those names listed at the safety building.
What Matt and I are planning on doing is, what we've done already twice, Matt just posted one today on social media, on the social media outlets and linked it to the department's website, is that probably about every seven to 10 days, we're going to try to put out a historical story. The first two that we put out, kind of in chronological order, the first one was from 1872, it was about the first police officer that was hired. And the second one that Matt posted this morning was from 1873, the following year, when they actually hired four additional police, special police officers. And the original story from-- he posted it on January for the first-- that original story kind of told the background of how we came to hire police officers to begin with. And then the second story that was posted today was why we needed additional offices. And the story's pretty interesting as to why we needed additional offices. When you think about how rural the town was and how difficult it was to get around from point A to point B in 1873, not being any telephones, there not being cars, there not being any real source of transportation except for your feet and your horse if you had one. So that's what the story was today. What we will do, and we do, and to answer your original question is, yes, we do, his name was Charles Ailey, and he was chief of police in 1893. But we do have all the records for all the subsequent chiefs and most of the offices that have worked since 1872, I've been able to compile in one fashion or another. And we're going to be-- Matt and I have discussed, we're not going to really follow a chronological now, we're going to kind of bounce around, so to keep everybody interested, maybe everybody really isn't interested in 1873 or 1884 or 1900, but they might be interested in 1960 or 1970 or even the present day. So we're going to really mix up the story and have artifacts and photos and they may be serialized also. We may have one, two, three pot stories because of the length of the story. And we're looking to put them out, like I said, every seven to 10 days. And obviously, if anybody has any questions about our history out there, you can certainly ask through our social-- I say ours, I'm not there anymore. You can ask through the department's social media platforms and those questions can be, you know, discussed amongst us and we can get answers out to the public if anybody has anything in particular that they want to know about the department. Because there's so much to tell and I'll be honest with you, we might not hit every story and-- but we'd like to. So if there is people out there that have a particular interest in a particular era or a particular officer or a particular goings-on of the department, feel free to ask, absolutely.
Thank you.
I obviously am speaking last, so everyone's already said it, but I just wanted to say I made a few remarks here. I wanted to receive a patch and thank you very much. I'd like to congratulate Ashley for designing this and say thank you as well. I really enjoyed listening to the history of it. I'm really impressed with just the culture that's been created with you as the chief and with your fellow offices. I can clearly see that it's a sisterhood and a brotherhood amongst all of the offices. I'm really liking the community communications. I'm a member of your website. I've interacted with your offices out in the public and everyone can't be any more kind and gracious when they see the public and that's a credit to you and to your leadership team. So thank you very much for all that you do. It's not an easy time to be a police officer. As a layperson, I can't imagine what you go through on a day-in and day-out basis to serve the public and do it in the way that you do and partner with other first responders. So when I say thank you, I can't be any more sincere than I am tonight. And I particularly am interested, I have always been supportive of police. When I was young, my great uncle was Paul Lynch and he always dressed-- I didn't know he was the chief of police when I was little. He was always in a suit and he had a top hat and a trench coat and he was always very charismatic and he told a story. And I said to my father, I said, "Dad, what does he do for us?" And he's like, "He's the chief of police." I'm like, "He doesn't look like the chief of police." And so to read some of those history stories, I was too young to know what he was a part of, but it was enjoyable for me because I had a personal connection. And I'm sure a lot of people have personal connections and don't even realize it because they don't know the names that go back that far. You know, I mean, I was born in '73. I'm talking '77, '78, whenever he was chief, but I didn't know what he did as a young kid. So now for me to go back and read it, it's nice to see that this historical information is still on a personal note. I appreciate that.
And if I could just interject something about the personal notes. I don't know if Sergeant Herman knows it yet, but he's going to feature in one of our stories. In 1873, the story that we did today on our social media sites, there was a special police officer appointed that year. His name was Stephen Otis Butters and he is Sergeant Brian Herman's great-great-grandfather. So like I said, unbeknownst to Brian Herman at this time, he will be featured in a story that we're going to kind of focus on. And that's similar to your story, to have a personal connection like that amongst current offices and current residents of the town. I think it enhances the public interest of the entire thing. Thank you.
I just want to also extend my thanks for you, to you for taking this on. This is just one other way that the department is connecting with residents and as we've mentioned earlier, certainly things like the National Night Out and the various civic events that the department is engaged in, but, you know, by providing some information about the history, it just creates another connection to the town and I think that helps in many respects, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll just close in saying that, you know, obviously you don't survive 150 years as an organization without, you know, support of leadership of the community and the citizens. And we've always had that since I've been here and this is hopefully a way we can give back a little.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate it. Congratulations. Okay, next we have Elizabeth Lawrence, Town Clerk, Rob Peterson, S.W.I.R., Chairman, Inhabitant Bylaw Study Committee regarding the review of recommended changes to inhabitant bylaws. Thank you for being here.
Hey, Mike. Madam Chair, to you members of the board, again, I'm Rob Peterson. I'm the chairman of the Inhabitant Bylaw Committee. I'm here this evening with Beth Lawrence, Town Clerk, and we have a committee member, Michael McCoy, present and I also see committee member John Romano present via Zoom and Mr. De Palma, who is on the committee, who is also a member of the board. Again, we're here this evening just to give a general update of where we are, where we stand as the inhabitant bylaw review committee. We've done a lot, so I believe the committee was formed about two years ago. I was actually a late add-on. I was actually specifically add-on at one point relative to town meeting-oriented changes and then I kind of remained on the committee and missed the meeting and was voted chair. That's how it works. So here we are today and again, over the past about year, since last June, what we've really been focusing on is the substantive review of the inhabitant bylaws. The committee decided about a year and a half ago that it was, again, our bylaws themselves are voluminous. They're riddled with references to CMRs and in general law codes, Massachusetts General laws. So we retained the services of ECO, General Code, ECO 360. What their job in this endeavor was, they prepare a critique of the town's existing legislation, identify conflicts and ambiguities in our current bylaws, thereafter seeking to bring consistency in order to what we have in front of us. And what their goal is, is to make a more user-friendly experience for any citizen who wanted to look up any of the myriad issues relative to the bylaws in the town of Wilmington. So what we did is, we haven't actually had the goal of, since June, we haven't had the goal of specifically bringing along any substantive change to our bylaws, whether that be of our own accord or of a citizen petition request, but rather what we wanted to do, what we focused on, was ensuring that our town bylaws are accurate, to date, legally enforceable, and not riddled with stale and/or outdated laws. As you will see in the materials we provided the board previous to today, the code has been reorganized and renumbered in accordance with the proposed organization code provided by, again, ECO, General Code 360. And there is a derivation table on what we've provided, which basically breaks down what, where the bylaw appeared in our existing bylaws and where they're going to be in our proposed bylaws. When we undertook review, again, of the substantive changes here, the following points were taken into consideration when looking at our bylaws. Are certain provisions no longer in force? Is the legislation inappropriate regulation of the subject matter or would such provisions be enforced under another law or statute? Are the procedures described accurate or should they be changed to reflect current practices? Are there obsolete procedures that can be deleted? Have problems in enforcement of a particular provision or risen in the past? Could the provisions be made more specific? Are the titles of the officials and departments up to date? Are there other administrative terms that should be changed? And the last point we were asked to address, are other amounts of fees and bonds adequate? Will they cover the town's costs in administering the legislation? So again, since June, we met twice, twice a month, on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month. And what we would do is we would take that legal analysis we provided and we would try to tackle anywhere between 20 to 30 questions per time that the committee met. So we got through that by the end of, I would say, August. Our last kind of issue that we tackled is we took a look at the existing bylaws, Chapter 5, which are kind of break it down into town department heads. And Mrs. Lawrence, along with our former town clerk, Mrs. Tuma Conway, they actually reached out to the specific department heads and asked them if the bylaws applicable to their specific department were to-date, enforceable, or if anything needed to be changed. All the department heads were great getting back to us what they thought they need to be changed, if it was perfect, or anything that they thought were, in a couple occasions, either repetitive with our zoning bylaws or just they kind of, they stated something different than our zoning bylaws and whether it should be repealed or just when we go through the inhabitant bylaw undertaking, if we should just leave those out completely, which you'll see too if you read the proposed draft, there's another table at the end of that in the appendix that shows basically if it was repealed, left off, and if you go through the legal analysis as well, it gives a detailed reasoning for why that would be the case. What we're doing here, again, just updating you today, what we plan on doing moving forward and again, General Code has given us a couple draft articles to bring forward to annual town meeting. One will be a renumbering article, that's a standard housekeeping article. The other one would be general and specific amendments to the bylaws. And again, if you look at that, the sheet that's been provided lists out the actual specific, you know, we changed Chapter 5 and it shows the wording, what has been deleted and what has been implemented. Other than that, Beth, do you have anything you want to add?
No. They, we received the preliminary draft the first week of December and they were requesting 45 days to come back to them with changes. If you were interested in something that you didn't like the wording or you wanted to, one of the things that are being taken out, you weren't agreeable to, they requested 45 days in order to get back to them so they could adjust the preliminary draft to be of your liking. At this point, majority of our changes are administrative and a lot of the things that they wanted to change just brought it up to what coincided with Massachusetts General Law. So if there was a conflict, they made us aware of it and if you look at our legal analysis, it was a step-by-step and there were many meetings that Tina Tuma Conway attended and took notes on what was voted on based on the department head's response. And I started up in September, I think we finished in October, and submitted our legal analysis response. So it was very lengthy and thorough and a lot of it is housekeeping. I don't know if you have a copy of the proposed articles. It laid everything out line by line on what was being changed. I do have copies of them if you'd like them, but we, I guess we were asking if you want to change what is in the preliminary draft, we need to know. We need to have something in writing so that we can have it reviewed by the department head, by town council, and get back to General Code as soon as possible so that we can move forward to the town meeting.
Yeah, and I would just add a couple things too. Relative to some questions we had, questions of law, we did seek the advice of town council. We actually had one outstanding issue as of Monday, as of last, I think it was last Thursday, they were waiting on town council to get back to us. He did, so that would be the last issue that we need to send along to General Code so they can kind of finalize that. It was all relative to the interplay between general laws and Massachusetts Fire Code, which town council did clarify. And I can also say that having General Code and then having our town council available to review these things has been an invaluable asset to the committee because when you're reviewing these things as a layperson, you're not familiar with the day-to-day operations of the general laws and they've been readily able to apply these laws and make sure and spot those ambiguities better than any of us ever could and probably cheaper than it would cost us to have KP run through-- would cost us to have KP run through the whole thing. So.
Mike?
I'll just say very quickly, I think Bob did a great job. As the chairman of the committee did an outstanding job. And the makeup were a lot of good folks of input in the town. And, you know, and I know the chief's behind me, and there's, like you said, there was like old bylaws that needed to be changed. One specifically that was changed was back in the 50s. I don't know if anyone was aware, maybe not a lot, maybe some of you folks do. But back in the 50s, that if you were taking a shower or a bath after midnight, the police had the authority to go in your house and arrest you. I think that's a bylaw that needed to be changed, you know. So, you know, so, you know, it was a great makeup of folks. They did a fantastic job, and it came together well. And I got to tell you, Mr. Manager, I think you did a good choice in picking Beth as the town clerk, because she did an outstanding job. She picked up now, I know she's got some big shoes to fill, and I would say that, because Tina, she did a great job. But I see her being an asset to the community and doing a great, fantastic job. And she picked right up. And I think we're just moving forward. And I just want to say, I think the group did a fantastic job, and we'd just like to get the support of the board and select and go to the town meeting and do what's good for this community. And just make some of these bylaws take place and put some actual meat into it, especially with the law enforcement. They need some help relative to the bylaws, and we need to give them that tool as well. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
Mr. McCoy, thank you very much. Mr. Romano.
Thank you all, and the other members who are not present. But we really appreciate all the work. This is certainly a huge undertaking. You mentioned two years in the making, and not all the work. I'm sure you would agree, very glamorous, but very necessary. And so, we appreciate you taking the time to do this. And I have no objections at this time, but I just wanted to say, we really appreciate all the work you put in. Thank you.
Yeah, I echo Mr. Bender's comments, and that you put in the hours. Because, you know, I talk to Mr. Romano every once in a while, and he explains to me a lot about the inhabitant bylaws as to what's going into it. I guess one question I had that was posed to me by a resident was, will you be putting these on the town's website so that they can look at them and review them before we get to town meeting? So, is not a lot of, you know, maybe there's something that needs to be tweaked beforehand or changed? That way they have an idea going into it.
Yeah. At our last meeting, which was at the end of December, I believe, we had that discussion. So, Mrs. Lawrence is going to work with Mr. O'Neil to get a link up on the town, I assume under the town meeting, the subarea of our town website, to show pretty much, the easiest way to lay it forward is to show what the, you know, the old bylaw was, what the new bylaws will be, subject to the town meeting vote, and then direct people to the specific areas where it shows the changes and what was changed, which is probably the easiest way to review it. And I can also just say as a general note while we're on that subject, that yes, that is going to be put out there. If you have any questions or concerns, we can address them to the town clerk, and then we, the committee as a whole can answer them. Or if it's a clerical thing, I'm sure Beth can, will do a great job that way as well. And just also, folks, when you're reading their proposed draft of the bylaws, you'll, what was, I think what was one of the biggest issues we had is trying to understand how they were set up. So, we'll kind of have some sort of directive when that goes live to explain, you know, why it looks like they, so you'll see, it goes from, you know, part one, we'll go one to eight. That's so we can have a liquid document moving forward, and there'll be sections available for if any future additions go in there. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. It's already set in. And ECO, General Code does a great job at setting that up.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
I would just say what my colleagues have already said, and just say a sincere thank you. I've been reading through it. It's quite intensive to read. It's a lot to digest. So, it's kind of been an ongoing process. My question has already been asked by Mr. Kyra in terms of the communication, just from an efficiency standpoint, because, you know, anything that we can do to not rush a process, but not elongate a town meeting over some administrative catch-up for residents, that they can kind of do some homework, if you will, prior to coming into the town meeting, I think would be beneficial. So, whatever communications through the town clerk, through your committee work, through the manager's office, and through any sort of media outlets in preparation for town meeting, I think would bode well for all of us, based on the amount of business that will need to be done. But certainly, once again, I just want to restate, thank you very much. It's quite a hefty meeting schedule with town clerk changing. I appreciate Mr. McCoy's comments about you stepping into that and bringing it to completion with the committee. So, that's a credit to you, a credit to the overall team. And thank you for coming in as well and adding your expert, you know, experience from your prior role, you know, as a moderator, and also as an attorney and a well-respected member of the community. So, thank you.
Being a member of the committee, there's one, the first thing I made an observation of was that all the members were dedicated. It's not a glamorous job, and it was really a pain sometimes, the things we were going through. Tina, our former town clerk, was outstanding. And when she left, I was concerned that Beth wouldn't be able to bring herself up to where we were in such a short period of time. But what was amazing was that she did, and she did exceed in her assistance to the committee. Mr. Peterson is being chair, worked diligently to resolve any matters we had, any conflicts we had. And as I said, it wasn't glamorous, and we went through a lot. And to see, to see the dedication of all members, Mr. McCoy, Mr. Romano, that's all over there on Zoom, and everyone else, it was nice to see that a group of individuals, including the chief, police chief, were dedicated in getting this resolved. It was a long time coming. And again, like I said, it wasn't just that it wasn't glamorous, it was a pain. But we bared through it, and due to our leadership and the assistance of the town clerk's office, and what a fabulous job everyone did, I just have to commend everyone. It's something that the town should be happy about, because we are getting our bylaws cleaned up. Thank you.
And I will just echo my colleagues' sentiments. I appreciate the long hours of volunteerism. I'm sure it was tedious. I mean, I've gone through a lot of it, and like Judy said, it's difficult, you know, to, you can only do it in small doses. So, thank you so much. It was well-needed, long overdue. And as you said, two years in the making. So, thank you all very much for your dedication and doing this for all of us here in Wilmington. Appreciate it.
I would just note that certainly one of the products of your efforts is going to be transforming the bylaws to be much more user-friendly, accessible to the public, because, you know, that's important when we have essentially the local laws of Wilmington. You want to make them, organize them in such a way that they're easily accessible. And I think, at the end of the day, when this is brought to town meeting, if the effort is successful, we'll have a document that is not only accessible and more user-friendly, but updated to reflect our current circumstances. So, thank you.
Any further comments? I think that's it.
Thank you all for coming in. Again, thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Okay, excuse me. Next, we have George Hooper, Public Building Superintendent, Dan Pallada from P3, Orders Project Manager, Lee Morissette, Principal, and Marco Criscatini, AIA Lead AP, excuse me, Senior Architect, Dietz &amp; Company, and Philip O'Brien, Principal Johnson-Roberts Associates, regarding the senior center and town hall/school administration site selection. Welcome, everybody. I would like to propose that we do get through this presentation first and hold questions for the end. At that time, I'll open it up to the board, and then we'll open it up to the residents here. So, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is George Hooper. I'm the chairman of the senior center building committee, also the town hall/school admin building committee. On the 30th, the senior center building committee came up with a recommendation, voted a recommendation. And on January 5th, the town hall/school admin building committee voted on a recommendation. Those have been presented. And tonight, to provide you with information, we have our OPM, Dan Pallada, with us from P3, who has the presentation. Also with us from Dietz &amp; Company, and Johnson-Roberts, Lee Morissette, and Mr. Philip O'Brien. Marco was not here with us tonight. He was unable to make it. So, I'll turn this over to Dan Pallada for the presentation.
Thank you. I can take the mask down, right?
Yep.
Okay. I'd sound awfully muffled if I wasn't. Thank you for having us again. You had asked us to do a little more work. Both committees did a little more work, and we're coming back with a quick presentation on where we are. Thought what we'd do is just go through some basic steps of what it takes to get to where we are. There's six basic steps that we've completed. You've selected an OPM. The OPM's helped the town select two designers. The designers then review the existing operations and start working on a program. The program is converted to space units. And the basic of a structure evolves in the size of a structure. The space units determine what will eventually become the datum of the size of the building. And then we take the size of the building and we test-fit it into the sites. So, P3 of Noel was selected as the project manager. Dietz &amp; Company of Springfield was selected for the senior center designer. And Johnson-Roberts of Somerville was selected as the town hall/school administration. You want to take this one?
Sure. This is, this is.
This is Philip O'Brien?
Sure. Philip O'Brien, Johnson-Roberts. Thank you for having us again. Programming, and we both went through programming, I'm sure Lee will jump in here as well. Programming basically begins with, in your case, for the town hall and school administration. Some of the previous studies that have been done, we also visited this building, as well as school administration and the other municipal buildings you have in town, took a look at your existing conditions. And then what we're trying to do is project the amount of square footage that you're going to need in order to create this new facility. And so, it's very kind of tedious, and I don't expect you to read all those numbers. It's just an example. But basically, we'll go department by department, layout, how many people are in there, how many projected people are going to be in there, how much room do they need for the equipment and the furnishings and the storage and so forth that they need. And that all kind of spills together, and we end up with a total down at the bottom. On top of which, we add a multiplier for the space that we need for things like stairs, elevators, corridors, toilets, mechanical rooms, the thicknesses of walls and so forth. And then we have a total. For the town hall project, we came up with a total, actually, that's very similar to what came up in the, what was suggested in the 2018 study.
You want to?
Yes. Lee Morissette, thank you for having us again. The similar process was done for the senior center. Interviews with the senior center's director and constituent building users was also, were done. Marco regrets that he can't be here. But he was the one who met with those various people to develop a similar type of diagram of building use. We went through the same process of establishing a list of spaces and their right sizes, based on the projected use of the facility for the immediate and forecasted future, and came up with very similar diagrams such as these, and the one that follows, which is the, an overall basic building diagram that describes how the spaces might fit together, based on the feedback from the director and the committee.
So, the total building size that we came up with, 42,000 for the town hall and 17,000 for the senior center, on the town hall side, it's pretty similar to what you had in your facilities master plan. On the senior center, it's a little bit larger than what was in the master plan, based on the programming needs of today. We were asked to study four sites, the Glenn Road site, which we're on, the Woodfield School site on Middle Sixth Ave, the Swain School site on Middle Sixth Ave, and land at adjacent to St. Dorothy's Parish on Main Street. Almost immediately, both committees had identified that the Woodfield School just was not adequate for either program or either building. Or either building. Thank you. The Swain School site, you want to talk about the Swain School site?
Sure. I'm going to talk about the Swain School site, because it's the site that we recommended to the building committee. The building committee voted on as the number one site in terms of the choice for the town hall senior, I'm sorry, town hall and school administration building. We took a look at this site, and it came to the top for a variety of reasons. The size of it is right. The location of it, from an urban planning point of view, is right. And it's reasonably flat down at the bottom. There's a pretty good-sized building area that's there. We needed to look at this site from the standpoint of what we were trying to develop there. And so, one question came up from the building committee that we were working with about why this site works and is large enough to support our building, whereas it may not work great for another building. And that's exactly the way the process should work. We have, we're looking at a different use. We're looking at a different massing, which is the kind of overall size and scale of the building. And we have probably some different opportunities for how do we develop a site like this. But from an urban planning point of view, which I think is one of the biggest reasons why this one works, right across from the common, it's across from the, from the school, the school administration. It's a good-sized building, and it won't overwhelm the neighborhood. There's a lot of other buildings that are even larger than this building in this downtown area. It's well-trafficked. And based on what you do at the site right now, it seems like a good fit. You do a lot of municipal things on that site now, and we'll still be able to do those things. We can still accommodate those things. There's parking on there for the high school. We'd still be able to accommodate that as well. So, this site, for a variety of reasons, works out pretty well for the town hall and school administration facility.
Sorry about that. Glenn Road site, I'll start on the Glenn Road, and you guys can pipe in. On the Glenn Road site, we were asked to look at, not only to put in the senior center at Glenn Road, we were also asked to put the town hall at Glenn Road. And the selectmen at the last joint meeting that we had asked us to do both the senior center and the town hall/school administration on Glenn Road. Both designers similarly placed their buildings in a manner as best they could. We lost two baseball diamonds in the process, and a considerable amount of tree growth in the pine grove that separates the current town hall and the fields. The senior center building committee took a formal vote to not move forward with a double use on this site. The town hall/school administration building did not take that step. They just went with a vote for the St. Dorothy, for the Swain School site. And St. Dorothy's, I'm going to ask Lee to just talk a little bit about, since it was the selection of the senior center building committee.
Thank you, Dan. As you mentioned, being the recommendation of the designers to the senior center building committee, this is the preferred site. And I can list a number of reasons. But I assure you, for all of three of this considered sites, exclusive of the Woodfield site, the design team did do numerous test fits on each site of each building footprint. And in all of those regards, I think we came up with three for each of the three sites. The building morphed slightly to fit as best as possible on each of the three sites. Those building test fits were then provided to the committee. Discussion happened. Feedback was given to the designers. We then came, went to our suite of engineers and in-house architects, and came up with an additional option to respond to additional concerns and criteria, so to best find the best possible fit on each one of these sites. As a result, we then evaluated which one worked best of the three sites. And it became clear, the St. Dorothy's site And it became clear the St. Dorothy's site offered the best suite or complement of features. One of the particular benefits is it's a flat site. It may have trees on it, but it is flat and it is accessible off of the main street, is a good size for the building use. The building won't be dwarfed by its neighbors or dwarf its neighbors, being a single story building. So being a single story building as a senior center is very important to, if you can afford it, to avoid stairs and elevators. This site offers that flexibility while still offering enough outdoor space to facilitate the development of outdoor recreation activities.
You asked us to increase our public outreach and public meetings. We've had a bunch of public meetings since we met back in September, early October. And we also have generated seven newsletters, which are on the town's website. They're also on a Facebook page and they are also connected to the P3 website. But all of the meeting minutes, all of the meeting, all the meeting minutes, all of the meeting recordings are all linked to the town website. So any resident can follow the entire process that either project has taken. The senior center recommends the Main Street site. The town hall school administration recommends the Swain School site. You can quickly talk about the plan that was, just quickly.
Briefly, this is the, the best of the versions that we came up with based on feedback from the committee and, and from the designers. As you can see, it sits very close to the Main Street, so it fronts on the Main Street and has a, a street presence to the town. It has a very simple vehicular drop-off, which is very important for a senior center to be able to get to the front door in an efficient manner. There's ample parking in the rear and there is plenty of available space for outdoor activities, whether, we're illustrating some pickleball courts because we know they're popular. It has outdoor space, potential for walking trails and even area for future expansion.
This is the, I guess I'd call it the preferred test fit that we did for the, for the town hall school administration at the, at the Swain School site. One of the questions that we had was whether or not we could, we could support the number of parking spaces that we needed for the town hall, which is based on your zoning bylaw. That's 140 spaces and still have ample parking for the other things that the, that the site currently used for, which is mainly during the day, during the school year, parking for the school across the street. And so we took a look at what it would mean if we tried to just max it up, max that out. We don't, we're not saying that this has been right sized yet in terms of the amount of parking, but we wanted to see if it would get fit. And what we did here is we've taken the, the town hall and school administration, it's a, it's a three-story, or I guess I call it a three-story plus, and there's a, there's a, a section of it that's, that's one story, so that it isn't, to kind of break down that, that overall mass of the building. And we've tucked that into the hill in this scheme so that we could take advantage of the fact that the building itself will act as a retaining wall and you won't have to kind of buy that twice and maintain that large open flatter area down below for parking and for events, which is what the space is used for now. We were also asked to not do parking or building on the green and we, so we've preserved that pretty much the way it is on the corner there as well.
So the next step is we're hoping that we can get selection from the board of selectmen by February 1st. If we have a selection by February 1st, we feel confident we can deliver both projects to the voters for a late fall town meeting. This gives us a little bit of wiggle room. There'll be some back and forth as we're going through the design of this, but it certainly is, gives us an adequate time to meet the timelines necessary for finance and our estimates and public participation on the design and the facades going forward. And I, that's really all we have.
And also to be clear, we've worked well with our IT director to put some information out there for social media, so we could get, and if you do go to the town's website, both projects are listed. Very easy to kind of go through and see the newsletters of the agendas that are there and each meeting. There's a link to WCTV and we can, all those things are pretty easy to see.
We're here to answer questions.
All right. So let's open it up to the, to my colleagues here. Does anybody have a question to start, any discussion? Questions?
Madam Chair. Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you very much for being here. Happy New Year to all of you. I appreciate the present, oh, thank you. Spend all day keeping it up, forgive me. Happy New Year to all of you. Thank you for the presentation. I first want to thank publicly each member of both committees. I appreciate my colleagues on the senior center committee and I appreciate the work that was done by the volunteers on the town hall school administration building as well. I appreciate also members of the administration who have assisted, that are here and, and not here. Certainly a lot of, a lot of work went into this, both these committees. Although I didn't serve on the town hall, I had the opportunity to, to watch the majority of the meetings, thanks to our friends at WCTV. And so I did my best to try to keep up with the great work of that committee. I want to state that I've been very impressed with not only Dietz, but Johnson Roberts. Both been very impressed with both firms, I think have done an excellent job. I know that since we last met in September, the diagram, some of which we've saw tonight and there were many others provided to us, were extremely helpful to me. The visuals that we've seen since September 27th, I really appreciate that. I want to reserve a little time, if I may, I know we're going to be later on in the meeting taking up some, it appears, board to consider items six and seven, so I won't, but I want to have a couple of questions, if I may, to the OPM. You mentioned the newsletters that went out. Where else besides on the town website, and I'm familiar, right on the homepage, I think Mr. O'Neill's done a wonderful job of creating a place that residents can get to that portion very easily. But is there anywhere else that those newsletters can be found?
I believe they can be found at the senior center. I do not, they have not been mailed to residents or, if that's the type of question.
Were they submitted to the local newspaper, Town Crier here?
They were not.
You mentioned a few moments ago that they were placed on a Facebook page. Do you know which Facebook page that was?
There's a Facebook page for this senior center that has the, has them listed, yes. I, I don't know the name of it. I'm not a...
The Wilmington Senior Center Facebook page?
I believe so, yes.
Because I, I'm sorry, I just, I assumed you were talking about P3 and I...
P3, I know P3 has developed a page also, but I, I don't know what the name of it is off the top of my head. I don't even do Facebook.
I try not to, but, but I did take a look this past weekend. I, I thought you might have been talking about P3 because I went back just a few years on P3. I didn't see anything about Wilmington at all, which I was surprised. But I, I guess I would ask if we could perhaps, in an effort to make sure that the residents see all the progress that's gone on, that's been outlined in those newsletters, that they could be submitted to the Town Crier. We have a couple of other online publications that a lot of our residents follow here in the form of a blog. So there's a couple others. I think those would be really helpful.
If you could email me, Selectman Bendel, where you want them to go, I'll make sure they go out tomorrow.
Sure. We have, we only have one newspaper here in town, the Town Crier, and we have a couple of online blogs.
I don't know, I don't know anything about the blogs, so a little help and I'll get my marketing person to get them there.
That'd be great.
They're pretty popular in 2022, the blogs.
Am I going to need to put up the shields after they go to the blogs?
Well, I just think that, you know, certainly, I recognize that, you know, maybe you and I don't go to those pages to get information, but a lot of people do.
That's fine.
And certainly there are a lot of people that still read the newspaper and, and both, quite frankly. So I think that whatever we can do to get that messaging out of all the, the progress that has happened since last spring, I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong, it was last spring that we were interviewing Dietz. In fact, I recall specifically because we were expecting a baby around the same time and I was concerned about missing the meeting, which I would have done, have had it, but the baby came early. So I didn't miss the interview. But since that time, we've had a number of meetings and I think we've made great progress. I, I appreciate the opportunity to keep this board apprised of our progress monthly via our communication letter. And, and I'm really, I was really pleased to work with everybody and we didn't agree on everything, but we certainly, I recognize there was a lot of work put into it. So I think that's all I have for right now. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments or, sure, go ahead.
Are you going to be staying around to the board to consider?
We can just move those up. We can just move the board to consider.
I will stay as, if you are going to make a decision tonight, Selectman Kira, I'll be happy to stay as late as necessary.
Kevin, excuse me, I think what we'll do is after we finish comments here, we'll open it up to the floor and then we can move those boards to consider up, just in the essence of making people wait.
A question that I have regarding a public forum, you mentioned that there were a bunch of public meetings. I know that there were a bunch of meetings. I don't know that there were a bunch of public forums. I don't know of one unless you had one that I'm unaware of that engaged community together as we've done traditionally in this task with, you know, when we talked about senior housing, we had a public forum, when we had a Bunch of Road Bridge project, we had a public forum, when we had a Yeti Recreation Facility, and several public forums. Did I, did we have any other forums for this to engage community as to get their...
With regard to the senior center project, we've had great public participation in the public meetings. We have not had the same engagement with the town hall school administration project. We have not had a public forum led by the board of selectmen or by the, or either committee as a standalone forum, if that's the question.
Yeah, that is a question. I'm, yeah, I think that last meeting on September 27th was, said that...
We, we had indicated, yeah. Participation.
Yeah, and solicitation of the opinions from the public. So I don't know if you did a survey or anything.
So...
Ways of importance to me is to know the community input. I understand the input from the seniors that showed in the senior center and those that showed in the town hall, the larger open, I think.
In the public meetings that we've had with both committees, there was not a request to schedule a public forum. We did in fact indicate that we'd be happy to host a public forum anytime that one was requested. I can't schedule a meeting, I'm not a town board. As the OPM, I'd be happy to participate, regulate, you know, moderate any public forum you'd like to have. I don't have a problem doing that. I think I indicated that on the 27th. Neither committee had asked me to, including your committee, had asked me to schedule one in any of those public meetings.
Yeah, I guess we're enough is that we rely on professionals to tell. Just like, I read an article in Revere where the OPM in Revere had three public forums to do a selection of the site.
I'm familiar with that, Brian. And they had three, similar to the public meetings that we've had. So I mean, I think that the public has, as with the Revere, has had the same opportunity to participate in our meetings. Although they weren't called a forum and we didn't specifically have a forum, you know, the three meetings in Revere were remote.
I have comments, but I'm going to save them for the board to consider. Thank you.
I have one question.
Yep.
It's regarding the senior center on, at St. Dorothy's. I'm not going to comment on the town hall because I do not support it. If, how, I'm sorry. The land that we have at St. Dorothy's, after the construction of the senior center, would there be enough room to add another building to it?
A building of what type?
Senior living.
At this time, with the test fit that's been made on the site, that criteria was not considered?
No.
So therefore it, it wasn't included as part of the test fit. If that's an item that would like to be considered, that can absolutely be rolled into the process of test fitting as we move forward. Anything's possible. It's just a matter of how big the building is and what other site constraints there might be.
Right. I, I was just, that's a, for me, it's a curiosity factor that if there is enough land there at some point, if we do decide to build some low-income senior, would something be able to fit in that, in that...
If it were planned for, it could absolutely fit.
Thank you very much.
But I, I might add that our charge is not to do that. That's why we didn't go down that path.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, senior centers are often near senior housing, but we were charged with a new senior center.
Right.
Or, you know, take a look at, at the needs of the senior population.
Yes. That I, I know and I do understand. It's just a curiosity factor on my half, my part, that if there is a way to design it, keeping the size that you're planning on and also at some other late, on the date, if it is looked at to add some senior low-income housing, would there be a fit in that property for it? And again, I understand anything is possible, you know, and that you weren't asked, more than likely you weren't asked about it, but it was just something that, as I said, I've been curious on. Thank you.
It's a very good question and to be totally honest with you, the criteria that we designed the test fit to did not include that additional use. That would greatly impact the configuration of the senior center as it is now and may very well violate some of the, the rules we were trying to, to satisfy, like a single story building, for example. Because the more things you put on a, a given area, the taller they have to be in order to fit.
I understand that.
And so therefore, if senior housing were an essential part of this project, which it's not, but if it were, that might affect the site selection. But given the criteria that we had under our charge, this is the site that we recommended as a result.
Thank you.
Question on the, the school admin town hall, where being a three-story building and where it was positioned. Question for you, when you, I spent some time over the past week and even before, I drive by the building every day, was sitting in the Swain parking lot, looking at the building that exists there now, the Bazell. It has a nice harmonious look to it as it fits into the neighborhood and I understand that this is to be a three-story building. And the comment was made that there are other like-sized buildings. If I paraphrase that correctly, I'm assuming you're talking about the new high school or the newer high school across the street. Not to be taken out of context, but I'm curious what a three-story building will look like in that area. And if I had a street view from the common, looking towards the Bazell Center now, would it optically look odd to have a three-story building up in front of a Bazell sitting in the rear? How is that going to look aesthetically for people walking around, trying to visualize that from, even from an elevation standpoint? I don't want to get off track and I want to stay on topic, but there are other buildings that have nothing to do with municipal builds, but private builds, that, there was a two-story building that went up in the north part of town that is a monstrosity because the site was elevated up, that to me, it does not look like... was elevated up, that, to me, it does not look like a two-story building. It looks like a four-story building, and it's adjacent to neighborhoods, so I don't want to take it on that track, but I think it's important to, you know, a picture says a thousand words, or it conveys a better story. I'm trying to picture what that building's going to look like on that site, and what it's going to do to the adjacent properties, whether it's public or private.
Thanks, I appreciate that question. Some similar questions came up when we presented this test fit. In looking at this plan, as I mentioned, there's a three-story section, and then there's the lower one-story section that has, for the most part, the large meeting room and some of the entrance and some of the other things. And in this case, that actually is planned north, on the upper part, at 12 o'clock, is the lower section. And so, one of the ideas we had is we could flip it, so that the higher section would be a little further away. Now, when you say three stories, that is one of the ideas, and that's what this plan shows, that portion of the building has three stories. We also looked at two-story solutions as well, which fit on this site as well. The idea of taking advantage of the hillside here and doing three is that it would be three stories starting at the parking lot level, so if you come in, you could get directly into the back of the building from the parking lot at Bazell, for example, you'd be coming in at the second floor, so it'd be two stories from that side, and the grade would slope along the side of it. So, depending on how you're looking at it, it would either be two stories or three stories, and that would only be on a portion of it, under this plan. So, we're sensitive to the idea of creating a building that's large in a neighborhood that is what I'd call mixed-use residential and commercial-type buildings, like the school administration and the school building across the street, the library is just down the road, there are other buildings that are similar. But we are sensitive to that, and we still think it will fit. We're not far enough along for me to be able to say, oh, I have a drawing in my back pocket that I could show you, but we will certainly get to that point, and that is one of the things that the committee has asked about as well.
Thank you. I just have a concern of a building sprouting up that looks like it's a building doing its own thing.
Sure.
And once we commit to that and we build it, I just don't want people to get the visual afterwards and be incredibly disappointed with the outcome, just based on the monstrosity size of a building.
We'll be very careful to make sure that folks' concerns are heard during the design process.
I'd like to add one thing that neither one of them has mentioned also. We haven't done a geotechnical survey of each of these sites as part of the site selection process. Once we identify it, then we can proceed to that. So, that, I mean, right now, they're just showing you what it may look like when we get in there, but once this technical survey is done, then we can figure out where that building may go, can it go here, what's there, so there's going to be a lot more to it. We're really in the infancy part of this, so that'll just be moved forward.
If I may to also add that, you know, before we go to town meeting for the appropriation, you know, we're going to have renderings, and, you know, if this doesn't look right, this isn't going to go anywhere. So, we know that the elevations of not only the Senior Center, but the Town Hall too, they're going to have to be acceptable to what the people of Wilmington are expecting.
Thank you for that. And then in this, I see kind of a light blue quadrants there. I am not in this trade, but I assume those are islands of some kind. And my question for you is, do you envision that this layout with this parking lot would still be conducive to a carnival for the town, which is where it's been hosted? And have, can you reiterate for the public, any committee discussions, even though I know some of the answers? If you think that this site, as a result of putting this building here, will take that one endeavor, just to name one, there are other things, yard sales, philanthropic efforts, car shows, yard sales, a myriad of different things, a farmer's market, which is on the green. Forgive me if I've missed a community program that's there, it's not intentional, but could that site still be used? And then my second question would be, if you can talk about any concerns about water and flooding that have been factored, just for the public.
Sure. So, what's showing there at the ends of the parking aisles is an island with some green space in it. And the idea there is that you could put some trees there, you could put your parking lot lighting there, and there could be grass underneath, there could be benches there. It's really just a test fit, so it's very preliminary to be able to tell you exactly what that is. If those green spaces weren't there, we had this conversation with the building committee, it would be a lot easier to plow, right, and go right straight through. So, there's kind of two different sides to that. Right now, wide-open parking lot is a lot easier to kind of maintain when it comes to things like cleaning it up. It's also much more flexible when it comes to things like having a carnival, because there's nothing in the way. Having places for light poles and trees offers shade, it cuts down any amount of wind, it helps to disguise the cars, obviously keeps it a little greener. The light poles in the middle will give you an opportunity for outlets to plug things in, which is also useful. We haven't gone through that design process yet. If those green spaces weren't there, you could actually get a couple more parking spaces. So, it's, that's a design decision that we haven't really reached yet, but it is certainly, it's certainly possible. The water issues that you've had there in the past, I understand you had some water issues in the basement of the school that used to sit there, if I understand correctly?
That's right.
We are considering a building that does not have a basement, put a slab on grade, and so even if it is built into the side of the hill, and we'll know more, as George says when we do geotechnical, if there's water under there, we'll be able to manage it, but we're not building a bathtub that's going to hold water and that we need to pump out if we need to waterproof those walls, but the drainage can just go to daylight without having to do anything fancy or expensive in order to be able to manage it. So, even just based on the kind of hearsay about water issues, based on the kind of things that we're thinking about here at this point, I don't see those as an obstacle or a problem.
Okay, thank you. And not to elongate, but I just want to go back to the communication piece, just seeking to understand points that were brought up by Selectman Bendel and Selectman Kyra regarding just the social media and the newsletters. What is the communication process of getting those newsletters to the town to be uploaded on the website? So, is P3 giving them to George as the chair, and George is submitting them? Are they going directly to the town manager's office? And the reason why I'm asking is to be transparent, is I was unaware that those newsletters existed until just recently. And we, and this isn't a criticism towards anyone, but just a statement of fact, is we normally get newsletters in our packets. I didn't receive any unless I missed them. So, is John getting them and uploading them, and how is that communication happening? Because I found them after the fact, but I wasn't getting them every month, so I'm just trying to understand futuristically, because this communication is going to be ongoing, what is, what is that process currently? That all these newsletters that are uploaded made their way onto the website, and I missed it?
May I try to answer that?
Sure.
So, the newsletters are generated by P3 after a meeting or after an event. We send a draft to some of the, to one of the committee members for edit, for form, not for function. Then we bring it to the committee, the committee voted the first three. Four and five, we had announced that after each meeting, we'd just send them out so that they'd be current rather than wait for the next meeting. And the, they go to, I think it's to John O'Neill.
Yeah, they come to me, and then I put them into John O'Neill, and then that goes on to the town website.
I didn't know about the blog, but, I mean, there's no reason why they can't go anywhere there. They're an electronic document, they can go everywhere.
Was any, anyone else on the board, were you guys getting these?
No, from the chair. I, you must be referring strictly to the Senior Center, they voted on those, because I don't recall on the Town Hall School Administration Building voting on newsletters or seeing any of that, so...
So, I believe, I believe, I believe the first two for the Town Hall, and, you know, I apologize if I'm not 100% correct, occurred at a meeting you were remote, and they weren't, I don't know whether we formally voted the Town Hall ones, but I know we formally voted the first three for the Senior Center. I think we just did it by, you know, ascension, so they were handed out and passed around at the beginning of the meeting, and we briefly went over them at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple follow-up questions, if I could.
Can I add something about, the newsletters have went up all at once.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
The newsletters went up on the website all at once.
And when did they go up?
I'm not sure, but I think it was for the Senior Center and to for Town School Assembly.
So, those, so over the past couple, I'm just seeking to understand, because I pride myself in my...
I don't know what the process is.
Okay.
It was just...
But I'm saying, you uploaded all of them, do you know if you did it within the last week?
No, definitely.
But was it done each month?
They all went up at once.
Okay. So, if they all went up at once, the last one is dated when? December?
I don't even know. So, I didn't read them or anything.
Just to try to serve our intent, is clearly that these go up following meetings of the two respective committees. We did, as was noted, that there were a batch that went up electronically all at one time because it was trying to catch up, so to speak, in terms of putting information together based upon prior meetings that had happened. These, you know, all of these newsletters were a reflection of discussions that had taken place during prior public meetings. So, there was certainly an issue of lag time in that, you know, the first meeting didn't result in an immediate newsletter going up, but the expectation going forward to the fullest extent possible is that, you know, when a meeting occurs, if there's substantive information that comes out of that meeting, it would generate a newsletter that would then get posted.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm just stating at all these points that the committee's in the meeting, you have meeting minutes, you're all in the meeting, the newsletter is a generation of that meeting for a public outreach. And if those meetings happen, September, October, November, December, and then they're batch uploaded, then it's not a consistent newsletter to get the message out. So, from my standpoint, if I may finish, is I'm a select person for the town who's trying to communicate to the public and try and get behind these projects, and I need these tools to be able to talk about these projects and to be able to get the community outreach. And it's a little disheartening to have an OPM or not have, to not be aware of how this stuff is being distributed, and this is a very key component of getting the votes to approve this project. There has to be mass communication out to the 23,000 people, plus or minus, that reside here. So, you know, if I have to be firm in my comments and direct, it's unacceptable for these newsletters not to be dispersed anywhere and just batched out at once to check a box off, to say that I made good on what I presented when I wanted to get hired. So, I take issue with that, and I'll close with that, but we need to take some responsibility that since our September 27th meeting, short of public committee meetings, we have not made a significant improvement in public outreach, and that's disappointing.
The reason, the reason they were batched, the first three were batched, was the result of your meeting, we were responding to your meeting, and we got all the information out up to that point, and those three came out immediately thereafter, and then one each meeting afterwards. I can't speak to how the town has applied to them. I can say they were, they are, and were on our side, but as you've indicated, and as Selectman Bendel's indicated, people aren't going to go to our site, they're going to go to your site. So, they were, have since been linked to your site. So, every time there's a meeting, a couple of days later, there's going to be one linked up.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you. And forgive me, I missed one of my notes earlier, and that was to compliment Mrs. Marsiello and her staff. They do put out a newsletter that we get every month, and I know a lot of residents like me subscribe to the email. I get an email alert with a nice update, and you've done a wonderful job of updating people through this newsletter. It's very pleased to see, so that was super helpful. And I failed, I failed to mention that earlier, so I apologize, but like that, I subscribe to other alerts from the town. For example, the MSBA project that's ongoing, you know, I've gotten a lot of alerts about that recently, they're having a public forum tomorrow night in their third meeting at the Wildwood School that I'll be in attendance at, but I want to get back to two questions here for the architects, if I would may. Mr. O'Brien, you, in watching the January 5th meeting, I think the OPM, correct me if I'm wrong, but you, when the motions were being made to select this site at the Swain Green, I think you wisely advised the committee not to pigeonhole themselves on a particular location of, on the site for the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, that has yet actually been to be determined, even though the site's been recommended, the physical building where on the site has not been determined. Is that correct?
That's right. That's the way I understand it.
Okay.
And Dan, I think was right, and just suggested that the motion that was made was for site selection rather than for any test fit specific, because again, this is a test fit, we don't have all of the information that we will have when we get to the next phase, topographic survey, geotechnical report, and so forth, we'll know a little bit more about the site, and then we'll get in to the site design as well as the building design, which will really kind of grow together for a site like this. We did look at a number of test fits, including one that had a building that sat a little bit more in the center of the site, and then we also looked at one that had a building up close to the street, doing a little bit more of the urban street frontage with the parking at the rear. We haven't made a decision yet on which way we're going to go. This just seemed to, I think to Dan and I, to be the most favored of the test fits that we've looked at thus far, which is why it's in this show.
Thank you.
The committee wasn't favorable on, up on Middle Six.
Thank you. And my second question, Mr. O'Brien, a few minutes ago, you mentioned there was a question about the three-story building and how it looked with the surrounding buildings, and you mentioned that, you know, potentially, it could be three stories in one space, but one story in another. I think you said maybe the one story might be where the large meeting room is?
Yes.
So, is it, is it safe to say that you have some type of preliminary design ideas about the building itself?
This slideshow actually shows one, one plan of one scheme that we've actually presented. This is what we'd call a bubble diagram. It's a very early plan diagram where you're really just looking at things like adjacencies. So, this isn't really a floor plan, but it gives you an idea about what's next to what, so that when you come in the front door, what do you see, what departments are there, how do you move around the building? That's really what this thing kind of gives you. This is actually from the three-story scheme that does not have the meeting room separate. The idea of having the meeting room pulled out as a separate space, just so everybody understands, in a larger room like this, you may want to consider having a higher ceiling, and if you put it underneath all the other floors, the whole floor goes up. And so, to try to give you a little bit of space without making the whole building get a lot taller, the idea was to take that larger space and pull it out to the side a little bit. There are obviously different ways to do it, but that's what we were thinking about when we, when we looked, when we thought about that. Even though we're still in the plan diagram stage, we are thinking about what it might look like in three dimensions, because we know we'll get there.
Thank you.
Does that answer the question?
It does, thank you very much. And Mr. Morris said the same question. Is it safe to say that, you know, you have, you know, you've had these locations for some time now, since we partnered together last spring, but is it safe to say that you, your firm has some preliminary design ideas for the Senior Center as well?
Absolutely, yes. This site test fit was the result of the adjacency diagram turning into a loose building diagram, so as we could best explore the best location for main entry, service drop-off, street frontage, major spaces, and to reflect the comments that we've received through the interview process with Terry and with the rest of the building's users and the committee themselves on desired spatial adjacencies.
Thank you, sir. My last question, I promise, is, Mr. Pallata, do you recall that last year I made several requests that we have a Senior Center Committee meeting at the Senior Center?
Yes.
So, that people could come and see the site?
Yes.
Okay. And did we ever have that?
We have not had a meeting at the Senior Center.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I am going to make a comment now, just because I feel like the communication is obviously a big issue, and I mean, I'm not pointing fingers at anything, I just want to try and give my opinion. to try and give my opinion here. Back in September, you know, you were asked to, you know, be more transparent, get things out. But I also feel that if the committees were not seeing that things weren't being more transparent, why didn't the committees move forward and say, hey, we haven't seen a newsletter, we haven't seen minutes, we haven't, that's where my disconnect comes, because it's not a one-sided thing. I think it's a team, it's a committee. So I think if, you know, if there wasn't a town meeting with the seniors or the, for the town administration, sorry, the school administration and town hall, why didn't the committee say, hey, you know, we talked about this in September at the Board of Selectmen, we need to get this, you know, on the board. So I guess that's where I'm finding a bit of a disconnect, because I feel like the blame is going all to Mr. Pallotta and his team, where I do think that the committees need to take a little responsibility for that. And again, it's not one, it's a committee. You know, I think if you weren't finding that the communication was good over the last three, four months, why wasn't anything said? Why wait till tonight to bring it up when we're here to make a decision? And I'm not saying we are or not, but I don't understand why this stuff wasn't addressed prior to this evening. Every time we bring these to the agenda, it keeps getting pushed off and pushed off, and it needs to stop. So these committees need to get better aligned. I'm sorry. I appreciate all the work, the volunteerism. It's hard. I personally don't have the time. I know, you know, many of you are super busy. And again, I'm not saying it's anybody's one fault. I'm just saying a committee needs to come together. And if the people we hired aren't doing their job, it's the committee's responsibility to call them out. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I respond to that?
Yes.
I just want to repeat my previous question, that perhaps Mr. Hooper, I think you were copied on it. Could you confirm that I requested on multiple occasions, I think in the fall, it was via email, won't spot you the date, that we have a meeting at the senior center so residents could come and see?
Right. No, you're absolutely right. We were talking about having a meeting up there. And of course, during the times of COVID and everything going on, it has been a little, little tricky. It's not one of the biggest spots that we have. We do have ours over here. But nothing says that we can't have our meeting there. Right now, we're at site selection. There are a lot more other things that we really are going to, that are really important that we're going to be over there. Probably similar to what you're talking about over at the Wildwood. As we're moving up into different, it'll be an open us, come on in, take a look. This is why we're going to have companion bathrooms. This is why we're going to, and this is what we're going to be looking at. And not to get off of that, but the newsletter, as soon as we had that meeting, we started to develop these. I worked with other committee members. We were going through, looked at the information that's getting out there. We wanted to make sure it was clear. We have two different committees that we're working on. So a lot of newsletters, a lot of information. It starts from the very beginning process of this, from when we took the town vote for appropriation, how we start moving forward. We start looking at it all. We edit it, making sure our information is correct before we get it out there, because we're trying to be as clear and concise as we can be to the public. So once we started putting these out, and I'm sure it will improve as we go along, but this was in the very beginning stage, so we also edit it, not being very familiar with some of the stuff that goes on in the history in town. Of course, they do have our facility master plan they went through, our other master plan that we had in 2003 as we go. A lot of information in there. But I remember looking through it and going, you can't put that in there because.
No, and of course, absolutely.
That's very inaccurate. So that's why you saw a lot of it come out. And we were, we were going through, and other members are editing it with me, trying to make sure that, we go, so you're right, there is, there is a lot of work. And we're going through, we're talking about meetings now every other week as we go along, try to get it out there. So yeah, if there's been any delay on a lot of this going out, it's just, it's been a group effort to get this information.
Absolutely. And I appreciate all of it. And I 100 agree with you that it's, you know, you need to edit it and make sure what you're putting out there is accurate. I guess what I'm trying, my message that I'm getting across is if, if people saw that there was a deficiency in communication, you know, we weren't seeing the, we didn't know about the newsletters, and there's a disconnect. Why, you know what I mean? That's all what I'm saying. And by all means, I truly mean no disrespect. You guys are working so hard, and I appreciate all the work. We all do. I'm just trying to get to, I just feel there's a lot of finger pointing going on. I'm trying to just bring it together and say it's a team effort here.
Absolutely.
And we need to just figure it out and make it right, instead of belaboring the fact that this wasn't happening or that one. I just want to fix it. That's all. It's absolutely no one's fault.
Right, no.
And I hope no one takes it personally.
No, no, nothing.
By any means.
They are two large committees that we have, and there's a lot of stuff that's going. And that's why we also have two liaisons on your board.
Yeah, no, of course.
Yeah, so.
And they, they keep us regularly updated.
If I could just respond to that. I think it was discussed at the November 30th meeting, our last meeting, if you had a chance to see it. So we did talk about that. And that reason, I, I hope you don't take this the wrong way. The flyers are very informative. I believe the young lady's name is Megan, who heads up your marketing firm. Is that correct? And yeah, I went back and watched the interviews where she appeared and talked about the things she was going to do. The flyers are excellent, and I think that they're just super important.
Oh, absolutely.
Pieces of evidence for the community to read those and stay abreast of somebody who's not only able to watch a four-hour replay of a meeting.
Right.
Or to attend a meeting, for whatever reason. And so I just, you know, I guess my underlying theme here is I really like those flyers to get out, those newsletters, rather, a little bit more. And so I would kindly request that, that be done, because they are, they're fantastic, along with what we already have from our senior center staff, an excellent newsletter that goes out monthly. So that would be my request.
Madam Chair, if I could just note, I think it's also important to, the fact that the town topics on at least two, and I haven't gone through the most recent ones, but certainly all of them, but I know the last town topics that went out, part of my message was related to this project, and I believe the prior town topics did as well. And that goes out to every single resident in the town. So, you know, we've had 10 meetings of the town hall school administration committee since January of '21. We've had eight meetings of the senior center committee since March of '21. They weren't, you know, called public forums, but any of these meetings, as everyone knows, is a public meeting. They're open to the public. They're advertised, you know, for the public to attend. This process that we've gone through with regard to site selection, in my estimation, and certainly I haven't been through it as much as some of the folks at the table have been, is, is no different than, than the projects that we've done. For example, the high school, when the high school was under consideration, the options, at least two of the options that were being looked at were the existing site and the site off of Salem Street. And there may have been others, but those were the two prominent ones. I don't recall that there were specific forums for those. There were certainly public meetings that were done with regard to the high school project, but there were not, you know, specific forums for that. So, you know, I understand that there's a desire to, there's much information out there, and we certainly desire the same thing. But, you know, we have not been trying to do this in the dark.
I agree with that wholeheartedly. These have been public meetings. Residents, the senior center, you know, has good turnout. You know, the other meetings may not, but they're out there. I mean, people know this is going on. If you look on any of our social media pages, people are talking about it. You know what I mean? Everybody has very strong opinions about all these buildings. So, you know, I think it would have been helpful to have it if, if earlier on, but I think we're past that now. And I think, you know, how many people, sorry, this is going to sound probably not very popular, but how many people are going to show up to the town administration and, sorry, school administration town hall meeting? Not as many as the senior center. I bet you will fill the room, you know? And is it really necessary to have that at this point? Because there is such good attendance, and I, you know, I think, you know, I think we know how, how they all feel. You know, is it worth having the town administration, I keep messing it up, town hall and school administration? Maybe, but I don't think so. And again, this is my, my personal opinion. You know, I think we just need to move forward, one way or the other.
To the manager's point, a lot of our committee members were, were on those building committees for the new high school. And when we did, we did look at those site locations, even here was one of the locations, the town hall site. And some of them were held during the day. There were public meetings in some night. No, no big forums as far as site selection went at that time, as most of my committee members will remember. Afterwards, when we started, once we got site selection, started what we're going to put in, adjacencies and programming, then a lot more.
Absolutely.
Public information. That, that's where we are. We're in that beginning stage. So once we can get past this, then it, again, to your public forum, we'll have them for the meeting. We'll show some of the deficiencies that we have at our current senior center or here in our lovely town hall. You know, that's what's being missed. So that'll be a lot more of that information. But it's that first step. We haven't been able to get past this yet.
Exactly. That's right. Thank you. Any further questions up here before I open it up to the public? Statements, comments? Okay. I would like to open up comments to the public just on the senior center and/or the town hall school administration topic. If you'd like to come up, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
If you can't understand me, hold on, this is going to hurt my focus. So, I have a few comments, you know, like, in July 2021, you know, why is? The summer of 2021, there was a bill that came through the legislature to establish a senior building committee similar to the MSBA. Actually, if you read the legislation, it was very similar. And six of those from what's called the informal focus group of the senior center wrote letters supporting that legislation. However, if the public came, nobody testified, and so it never came into the committee. And I was thinking, if that's something the Board of Selectmen should have known about, should have been in touch with our delegation, and should have been communicating, because that would have saved our money. So I'm disappointed with communication about that. If you don't vote for this, then you're failing to establish a senior center, a recreation center, and a town center all at once. At the public forum regarding the senior center, there was 42 people there. I would challenge you to find that many people have made any public meetings. Forty-two people, and they were all of one mind, by the way, because along with the Elder Services Commission newsletter, there's an Elder Services Commission meeting every month that everybody's invited to. And there's been a pretty good turnout of those, too. So I assure you, the seniors are well aware of what's going on. And finally, I was very involved with the middle school. Some of them may remember. Some of them were probably too young at that point. I think this one, Mr. Bendel, was all elementary school. But the middle school, we never went through site selection. It was all done by the town manager. He chose, that's where it went, period. And there was some concern about the Salem Street site being too wet, and that was the only other site that was considered for the middle school. I hope that you'll move along. It's been too long. The focus group has been meeting since the summer of 2019. And despite COVID, we've continued making progress on this. It's time to make a decision, because time is money. Tick tock, tick tock. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ken Clarkin, just a follow-up comment on what my wife said. The plans to build or to create a senior citizens, a senior center similar to MSBA, that's been in committee multiple times and has yet to come out, including just recently. There have been a lot of people involved in doing surveys, trying to find out what we want in a senior center. So there has been a lot of public comment in and around that hasn't been seen. There's been part of the focus group prior to this. And I would just reiterate that my wife said time is money, and we've spent coming up now on four months to do the due diligence to make sure we had the right spot for this town hall. And in four months, we're probably incurring a lot of increased construction costs, possibly some out-of-scope effort on the part of the committees. So it is time to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. West, please.
Hi, good evening. Frank West to Richwood Road. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the members of the Board of Selectmen that came up with the questions that they asked. I mean, you, you asked a lot of informative questions. One of them I didn't really get to hear an answer to, and that's specific on the town administration, go by you, town hall, school administration. If you could pull up that slide for a sec, please, and I'll promise I'll be as brief as possible. Specifically to the Fourth of July celebration, you know, we kind, you know, that, that was asked by Selectman O'Connell, and how would this Fourth of July celebration of women be affected by the plan that we're looking at here? If, and again, I get it that this is conceptual and not, you know, not a final plan.
I'm not going to ask a fair question to the, to the OPM or our designers about our Fourth of July. They're not quite sure. I will say that we've had increased parking spaces here. If you look at it, the Swain Green would remain the same. So you remember when the Swain School was there, how we tried to configure around that. We haven't had a lot of Fourth of July activity recent. It's been downsized. A lot of it used to be adjacent with the old high school down the side of the field. So that's still a large parking area. And I believe it was an additional 140, 104 parking spots on top of what was there. So you're still going to be able to get in there and put some of your, your farmer's market, your car shows, and you'd have to configure maybe the smaller rides, like you would have to do what you have now. So it would be a larger, a little larger spot, but it's not going to create anything for Fourth of July festivities.
I guess I would say, though, to that point, as those of us who have seen the more recent versions of the Fourth of July celebration, there's rides that take up essentially that whole paved area, and then this separate area on the green space. You know, to the, to the extent that there are traffic islands or light fixtures, that would certainly have an impact, it would seem to me, in terms of, you know, how we, how a Fourth of July event could be configured. Can it be revised in some manner? You know, I would certainly think so, but as I think was noted earlier, to the extent that we have light fixtures, you know, similar to the parking lot over at the high school, clearly, given the way that's set up, you wouldn't be able to have the rides that we do at the, at this space.
And, 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 Madam Chair, I tend to agree with that comment. You know, because one of the concerns that I have is that, you know, you know, one of the, one of the things about this town is Fourth of July. You know, we have a nice celebration. You have, you know, a bunch of food vendors that are nonprofits that, you know, traditionally use that as their one, in some cases, their only fundraiser or major fundraiser. And the thing is, is that the more and more you downsize the Fourth of July, the less attractive it becomes to people. You know, so if you have like all just, for lack of a better term, you know, small kiddie rides type deal, you know, you're not going to attract older kids, families, et cetera, et cetera. But, and again, I don't want to belabor on that, but I just think that you really, you know, in whatever happens in that site, I think that you really need to look at the Fourth of July committee for input and, and see what goes in there. The, the other question I have is, is that in this type configuration, is it that you're cutting into the hill to try to, you know, basically remove the hill and create more of a retaining wall type situation?
So the idea of this plan would be to tuck it into the hill a little bit, so that you could get access to the upper floor, the second floor, from the rear portion where the senior center is now, and then get access directly into the lower floor from the parking lot. So it allows us to kind of, rather than, it allows us to use the hillside as an asset rather than a, than a problem for us. And it opens up more of the space down below for parking, for, for the, for the facility itself, for what's used at school, and also for your celebrations and so forth. used at school, and also for your celebrations and so forth, for the other things that we're using there. And again, it's not a design at this point. It's really just a test fit to make sure that things function and fit the way they do. The Fourth of July celebration is one of those things that we talked about. We don't know all the particulars about it, and I'm sure we'll learn more about that if this is the site we decide to move forward.
Because the reason why I ask is that, because I know, and again, you know, a minor, you know, kind of a minor thing for some people, it's not a major thing for others, is that this time of year, a lot of the kids, bring their little ones, using, using the hill for snow, you know, for sledding down the hill. You certainly can't take a four-year-old and bring him downtown park, but you can take a four-year-old and bring him down to the, you know, the, the Buzell School. And I guess my final question, final questions and comments would be, what happens to these buildings? You know, for example, the Buzell Building, you know, we moved the senior center out of the Buzell to another location, you know, be at the St. Dorothy's or wherever, but what happens to the actual building? And then with that, what happens to the Roman House? Because that's school admin. And what happens to this building? You know, what are the long-term effects of the, of what we're talking about here on the, on the three structures that we're using today?
I can't speak to the particular, you know, we're, we're trying to get sites at this point. You know, certainly, the status of the, of the existing Buzell Center, of the, the Roman House, you know, that, that remains to be seen. There's, I'm sure, going to be spirited discussion about what happens to those buildings going forward. But, you know, the focus for me at the moment is, is trying to get the process moved forward here with regards to site selection and ultimately, design and cost estimates for buildings.
And I guess my, my final comment, for lack of, would be that if you're looking at a three-story type building, three-story type configuration, you know, I, I, I was spot on with you, Judy, when you were talking about putting a three-story building at the, at the Swain School site, because like I said, it's the effects, you know, the whole effects of the neighborhood. And I know the building you're talking about in North Wilmington, that, you know, for lack of a better term, had a lot of spirited discussions on it. But you can see that that's a two-story building, and it really doesn't, it really looks like, you know, like you said, three or four. Can you imagine that, that type building on the site, even though, you know, and again, I would consider it flat, but, you know, try to envision that type of height in that building. You know, and here, you know, with all due respect, I think here you could build, you know, within reason, a three-story building or whatever you wanted to. And I don't think you'd have neighborhood complaints because you're really tucked into yourself. So it's, you know, just a thought. And lastly, I think that you, when you have too many things going around in these parking lots, you know, you might be setting yourself up for issues because you've got the school kids using the lot, you've got the people using the town hall, school admin, you don't know what's going to happen at the Buzell that, you know, could add to traffic. It's just, you know, I, I just think that, you know, you could be making more of a congested site here than, than necessary. And I, I would go forward, if it was me, I would go forward with the St. Dorothy's site for the senior center, and I would really look at this site here for a town hall and school admin. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for all, all the committees and everybody's input on this.
Any further comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Oh, sorry.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Diane Allen. Good evening. I'm Diane Allen. I'm also a member of the permanent building committee, and I'm on both the senior center committee as well as the town hall slash school administration building. And I'm listening to the concerns tonight of the selectmen's comments. And I would agree that we are going to do more on the outreach. We have had this as a, an item on our agenda every meeting. And we're looking for different ways to move forward with getting the information out. And I agree that we can't just have it as a newsletter on a website. We have to have some visuals. We have to have people being able to see things, maybe. Maybe we have talked to the editors of the town prior and see if they'll allow us to have a column, you know, that we can put in there as far as an update. Maybe with the water bills, we can send out an update and newsletters, maybe a picture of what the site is going to be. But the first step that has to take place before any of that really has to be the site selection. Once the site is selected, there is so much more that we can do. And as George Hooper said, we have just been right now going over and over different options, different questions. And, you know, it's going into four months that we are trying to answer questions about site selection. I think the time has come that if, and if we can just make that move for the site selection, we can flood this community in many, many different ways for information that they need to help the taxpayers of this town at the annual town meeting to make whatever decision they want to make. And that would be probably a special town meeting, not an annual town meeting. But I would agree. I, and to Selectman O'Connell, she did a terrific job with Yentown Farm. I remember many, many, many of the things that she did. And we will try to emulate getting the public involved. We had tours, with incoming of tours being set up at the senior center, as George Hooper said, even with the town hall. But you can't get to that point, and there's a lot of frustration, not only with myself, but I presume maybe with the other members as well, is we are, we are ready to move if we only can nail down this initial step of site selection. Once that's done, our meeting, I see that is going to be the topic to discuss the delineation of the outreach program and how we're going to go forward from here forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other further comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. We are going to take a five-minute break, just.
Do you intend to take the board to consider items up immediately? Just so that
Yes.
the parties at the table know
Yes.
that we're going to be immediately
Yes, that is my intent. Yep. So if you can stay, we're just going to take a quick five-minute break. And we'll be right back. Okay, to, I am going to move the board to consider number six and number seven now in the interest of everybody being here for the discussion. So, Mr. Hull.
So with regard to
Sorry.
I just, I have no problem with that. I just wanted to make sure that we have three memos regarding this subject matter on communications. I don't want to disrespect the people who submitted them.
Sure. Point to those first. Thank you, Mr. Ben.
So under communication, we have a memo from George Hooper, Public Building Superintendent, with regard to the senior center recommendation. I'll just read it into the record. The senior center building committee met on November 30, 2021 to deliberate review of presentation provided by DZ Company to assist with the selection of a site for a new senior center. The committee looked at three sites, 15 School Street, the Swain School site, 121 Glen Road, the existing town hall site, and 130 Main Street, adjacent to St. Dorothy's Church. During deliberations, additional consideration was given to the Glen Road, current town hall site, with options being presented to use a portion of the existing sports field to accommodate both the senior center and town school administration on that site. During a presentation of both to remove the Swain site and the design of multiple buildings at the current town hall site, from further consideration was approved unanimously. The two remaining sites for consideration were 130 Main Street site and the Glen Road site. After extensive questioning of the designer and the OPM and deliberations by the committee, a motion was offered with a five to two vote in favor of 130 Main Street. As chair of the senior center building committee, it is the committee's recommendation to locate a new senior center at 130 Main Street site. The designer and OPM are available for a board of selectmen's meeting to present our findings. If there are any questions, please do not hesitate to call. Next is a memo from George Hooper, the chairman of the town hall school administration building committee. It reads, "The town hall school administration building committee held a meeting on January 5, 2022, to deliberate review a presentation provided by Johnson Roberts Architects to assist with the selection of site location for a new town school administration building." The committee reviewed three site locations, 15 School Street, former Swain School site, 121 Glen Road, existing town hall site, and 130 Main Street, adjacent to St. Dorothy's Church. During deliberations, additional consideration was given to the Glen Road, a current town hall site, with options being presented to use a portion of the existing sports field, fields to accommodate both the town school administration and the senior center on that site. During a presentation, a vote to remove the town hall site at 121 Glen Road from further consideration, which was approved by a vote of seven in favor and one opposed. The two remaining sites for consideration were 130 Main Street site, adjacent to St. Dorothy's Church, and 15 School Street, the former Swain School site. After questioning of the designer and the OPM and deliberations by the committee, a motion was offered to vote on the last two remaining sites with a seven to one vote in favor of 15 School Street, the former Swain site. As chair of the town hall school administration building committee, it is the committee's recommendation to locate a new town hall school administration building at 15 School Street, the former Swain site. The designer and OPM are available for a board of selectmen's meeting to present the findings. If you have, if there are any questions, please do not hesitate to call. And then the final memo is from Selectman Kira, and I'll defer to Mr. Kira.
Thank you, Mr. Hull. Just a point of clarification on the first memo regarding the senior site. I believe, and I could be wrong, if you can correct me, I thought it was a four to two vote, not a five to two vote, but I may be incorrect in that. I thought initially it was four to three, and then Mr. Hull was questioned as to why he was voting, and then it went to a four to two. So, I don't know if you can look, check that out, or, yeah. The members of the town hall school administration building committee met with Dan Pallotter, our OPM, by Zoom on Wednesday, January 5, to consider the three remaining sites, that being the Swain site, the St. Dorothy's site, and the Glen Road site. Phil O'Brien, the principal with Johnson Roberts Associates, highlighted the characteristics of each site. All of the sites were viable and, and able to hold a three-story building. There was a couple of sites that we looked at on the Middlesex Ave, Swain site. And for my fellow members, it says here Church Street, it should be Middlesex Ave on this memo that was done. And after a brief discussion amongst committee members, a vote was taken to eliminate the town hall site for further consideration. This vote passed by a margin of seven in favor and one opposed. A second vote was then taken to recommend that the Middlesex Street, School Street site, which passed on a vote of seven in favor and one opposed.
Okay, so now we're back to board to consider. So the first item on board to consider is the site for construction of a senior center building. So clearly, in this instance, I'd be looking for a vote of the board of selectmen as to whether the board is inclined to accept the recommendation of the senior center building committee, or whether the board would like to pursue another direction.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we accept
Mask.
Oh, sorry. I'd like to make a recommendation that we accept the site for the senior center that the committee has presented to us.
I second that recommendation. For discussion? Seconded for discussion? Yep, discussion.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, it's worth repeating, I really appreciate the efforts of my colleagues on the senior center committee. A lot of work, a lot of thought went into it, and certainly a very spirited debate at our last meeting in November, in which we came, the committee came to a conclusion of the St. Dorothy's site. Full disclosure, I advocated for a different location. Myself, Mr. Hooper, Mr. Hull advocated for a different site. Ultimately, we lost that vote. But, so we disagreed there, but we, what we do agree on is that the need for a new senior center, and that's why I intend to support the recommendation from this committee tonight. The only thing that I would add, and if Mr. DePalmer is so willing, I would like to see this motion amended, and so that it's endorsed for this coming April 30th, the town meeting. We heard earlier from both architects that they already have preliminary designs drawn up. And I think that we should move forward with an aggressive schedule
I agree.
for our OPM to prepare this for April 30th, if possible.
Selectman Bendel, I agree with you. Let's, as you said, let's get aggressive with this. I have no problems with amending the motion.
Chair, just, I, I think, I'd be interested to hear what our architects and our OPM, their comments, but I, I don't know that we have the ability to, our town meeting is April 30th. The warrant will be signed by the board of selectmen, or is proposed to be signed by the board of selectmen on March 14th. I guess the question is, is it possible in the next three months to do all the geotech, all the final design, all of the work that in the prior schedule was referenced as taking seven months, that can, can that be done in two or three?
Yes, please.
Not to be done openly, transparently, and to give enough time for outreach. The survey is ready to get started. The geotech can't be started until the final location of the building is done. We probably can estimate, within reason, what the cost of the building could be if you want to move forward with an appropriation. But I don't believe you'll have 100% of the information necessary for the voters for a successful vote.
So if I, if I may follow up, Mr. Pallotter. So do you have an estimation of when? I mean, so if we can't do it in January, February, March, April, four months, then how long do you think it may take us? Just for the, for the, for the record. I know you've discussed this at our meetings before, but
Right.
just for the public at large.
I, I think, I think that we could successfully be ready for a town meeting in the summer, probably early summer. The town The town hall is a little bit different, that's where the seven-month timeline comes in. It's a little more difficult than the senior center. But I, you know, if you don't want to wait until a fall town meeting, I think if you wanted to schedule a special town meeting in early summer, I think we could do it then, or early fall. It's going to take, it's going to, just so you understand, it's going to take a minimum of three to four weeks to get the final estimate, and that estimate gets vetted by the OPM and the architect. And that estimate needs to be in the finance committee's hands, and each finance committee and each town's a little different, but they're going to want to go through it, and, you know, so that they can set up their, their schedules and so on and so forth. So, the seven-month period is where we came out with the, with the Town Hall School Administration. Senior Center, as indicated, is a little further ahead of the Town Hall School Administration. It is also a simpler structure than the Town Hall School Administration, so we can move a little bit faster, but I don't see anything earlier, anything earlier than early July.
Thank you. And so just to comment on that, the challenge with a early July meeting, as, as members of the board know, at the close of the fiscal year, our free cash goes to zero. It's just, it's a part of the financial machinations that we work through with the Department of Revenue, and then the town finance director closes the books on the current fiscal year. It's a fairly extensive process that needs to happen between the finance director and the assessor. Ultimately, we have to get free, free cash certified again. Typically, that does not happen until late October, early November. So if we're going to have access to free cash, which was part of the basis for pursuing this, to, to pay for some of the costs associated with construction, we need to have free cash available to us.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to respectfully disagree with that assessment by Mr. Manager, and I don't want to delay this, so if my committee members feel passionate one way or the other, I'm willing to withdraw my amendment to Mr. DePalma's motion, but I just want to make it clear that I believe that we could get aggressive and try to do this a little sooner than November, which has been previously mentioned by the manager. But again, my, the fact remains, I intend to support this item.
Again, you would, to the site designers and everyone, you don't feel that you'd be able to get a completed project by June? Because if we get it, if we get it for June, then we're, we're covered with free cash, correct?
Yes, free cash is on the books until June 30th.
Right.
We did a late, our last June meeting.
I mean, I know it's, you know, I know there's a lot to do, but where you had made, said that it's, the senior center is a little easier. I mean, it would help the town out, and it would help the seniors out too.
Madam Chair, I appreciate the amendment, and I do understand, sorry, I appreciate the amendment, and I do understand where you're coming from, and it, it would make sense to me if we could do both projects at one town meeting rather than splitting them up, in regards to the expense that it's going to take for the town to incur, the location, the setting of the warrants, and I just think that the free cash issue, I think if both could be done together, Mr. Pallotta, I don't know if that's possible, then I would, I would be in favor of doing it in July or August, as long as they, but, you know, now we're talking about four town meetings in a year, the special town meeting March 8th, the regular April, then we're talking one in June or July or August, whatever it might be, and then one again in November. I think I'd be town meetinged out at that point. But I, for me, if we can't do them at, at the same time, then, then we shouldn't do one than the other.
And that's, that's a policy question. With regard to Selectman DePalma's question, I mean, it's theoretically possible if we went full bore to get done by the 30th of June. I don't think it's, I don't think it's probable, but it's certainly a goal we can try to attain to, and we certainly will know by around April 1st whether we're going to be able to hit that goal.
I could just reiterate, Madam Chair, I'm willing to withdraw the amendment, but I just thought we should explore it. You know, we are doing our due diligence here, I wanted to offer that, Mr. DePalma was in agreement, so we're here, we are exploring it. If it's not possible, it's not possible, but I believe we should at least have explored it, and we're doing that now.
I think it's a good suggestion, I'm sorry, but I, you know, finally come to this point where hopefully we're going to move forward, I think we have to do, let them take the time they need. I, I agree, it would be great if we could get it done in April or June, but if we're not going to have, you know, the 100% to have that town meeting, you know what I mean? I don't want to start pushing things through just in the essence of time that, you know, has gone by. But I do agree with having it be great if we could get them done together.
So, Mr. Bendel, you're, you're going to withdraw your amendment to the motion?
I believe, based on what I'm hearing from my colleagues and what I'm hearing from professionals that we've hired, I will withdraw my amendment to your motion, but again, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you. I have no qualms with keeping the motion as it was, with the understanding that we attempted to, and due to conflicts in design, not in design, but in time, it wouldn't be able to feasibly be done. But I continue on with my motion to accept.
I support the motion. Any other responses from them?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, you know, I know we've, we've been running long through the night. I see, when I looked at these projects, you know, first my comment would be that I think, just for the public knowledge, because there's been a lot that's been stated, is that I'm firm about the fact that both of these projects are worthy of consideration and they should be approved. If people recall, at prior town meetings, it was voted by the residents of Wilmington to take up these two projects and work to get to this point, so I believe this whole process is carrying out the will of the people, and I don't think the intention was to get to this point, then not proceed with supporting it and let it get to the town meeting floor. So when I look at this, it should be two separate and distinct projects, one should not be contingent on the other. However, when we're trying to put together this town puzzle, so to speak, of all of these buildings, I want to just remind people that back, and correct me if my years are slightly off, I'm sure people are fact-checking me all the time, is that back in 2015, the town was, was given the assignment to do a facilities master plan, and I believe that report, through the work of people that don't include me, so I applaud all of those efforts, that report was released to the public in 2018. And so I had an opportunity to revisit that, 300 and something plus pages. Again, I give credit to the credit, to the people that were involved in that, and I want to be clear, I'm intending to, to support this recommendation of this committee work as well as the recommendation of the other committee. However, I want to say that I, the choice of the sites that are being recommended would not be my choice, but I want to be supportive of the project and respect the committee work that was done. And the reason why I have pause on this, and I'm choosing to go in this manner, is because it's, it's been stated, you know, it's the will of the people, we've been elected to represent our constituents, this is what the seniors want, this is what the community people want, it needs to get to town meeting floor to be able to come to fruition. So, I don't want to block that public process. However, I do want to articulate that in that facilities master plan, it clearly states, and I have the pages written down, but I won't belabor the point, is that it was recommended in the facilities master plan for the senior center to be at this current site. So the recommendation that has come out of that committee work, I just want to explain, does deviate from what the facilities master plan actually states. The facilities master plan, which I know we're not taking up the town hall school admin building, says that that project should have either been at the Swain site or at St. Dorothy's site, and based on the Swain recommendation, that is in line with the facilities master plan. So, coming back to the senior center, I had the good fortune of going to that site on December 14th, I've been there previously, working with Terry and George, and, and I clearly understand the need for the facility, the programmatic limitations, the future of seniors, that seniors now more age in place, that this is going to be a building for decades to come, and, and I want to be supportive of that endeavor. I do believe if that took place here at this town hall site, like the facilities master plan stated, it would be tucked away in a more safe environment, we could take advantage of the wooded areas that we have, the preliminary walking trails that we have, the pickleball courts that we currently have. But I understand, in speaking to seniors, that they want some exclusivity of having their own parcel of land at St. Dorothy's, so that they don't have a mixed-use environment, that they have a destination for seniors of, of all interests, and that they can grow their membership. And so, I don't want to, even though I think it should be at this site, I don't want to derail or shorten, you know, get it moving forward, and let it get to the town meeting floor, and let the townspeople discuss it and take a vote. And even though, you know, I may have appeared to be critical on public outreach, that's one of the primary roles as a selectman, is communicating with the public. And I believe that all these media vehicles, whether it's in written form, newspaper, all of that, is so critically important, because this is a numbers game. It's not a game, but it's how do you mobilize an effort so that you get the maximum amount of votes for a given endeavor? I want to see this project be supported, I want to see the town hall project be supported. I know that the town manager does a ton of work to get his, his, his town topic newsletter out. Respectfully stated, most people have a mortgage where their property taxes are escrowed through their mortgage company, so they're not opening their real estate tax bill real time, because they, they're not responsible for paying it, their mortgage company is paying it directly. So I might get to that newsletter after the fact, or on a delayed read, where the water bill, I'm certainly opening that right away, because I'm responsible for paying my water bill, my mortgage company is not paying that. It should be in the town prior, it shouldn't necessarily just be on social media. I know we've already discussed that, but I did have a point in bringing up communications, not to be critical of given parties, but just to say that this is the totality of bringing this to town meeting, so that it doesn't get voted down. All of these efforts is to bring these buildings to fruition. So I do believe that it made sense to go back and do the additional work that was done. If we had had the senior center here, and we had had the town hall building at St. Dorothy's site, I'm not the experts, and forgive me if I'm misstating, but I believe we would have had more of an opportunity to potentially incorporate senior housing down the line. We would have left the Swain School area wide open for carnivals, for all other town endeavors. And those decisions would have, with the, the senior center being here, and having the town hall school admin building at St. Dorothy's, that would have been in line and mapped directly to the facilities master plan that was drawn up in 2015 to 2018, which was said then to be the first endeavor that was to be done, to create the future illustration of what the town was supposed to look like. We, by voting these, for the record, we are not following what that plan states. However, back to my original point, I think the timeline should be in line with what our professionals can do, that we put out the best product to the residents to consider. We have to be in line with our finance committee and our town accounting, to make sure that all of our money is straight, that we get favorable borrowing rates if we need to borrow, that we are systematically going about this, so that financially, respectfully stated, we're sitting somewhere around $33 million in available cash right now. I believe we need to start spending some of that money towards some of these projects to help shoulder the burden for the taxpayers. I understand people have concerns about school. We're doing the MSBA situation in March because of the coupon that we're going to be getting from the state, we've already discussed that. I understand some people may not support a town hall school admin because they want to see a fire substation happen first. The reason why that has not happened is because we don't have a parcel available to build that now. I think that's an important comment to make. In addition, years prior, we still didn't have the parcel, but we also did not have the staffing that we needed at the fire station to be able to even support a second building. If you go back, and I was on the board during this time, we had a significant staffing shortage on the fire department, we had to fill a lot of vacancies there, our overtime costs were exponential at that time. There was also concern about having enough apparatus to outfit that new building and to have adequate staffing. So that is the reason why, and that's why we entered into mutual aid agreements with our fellow neighbors, to make sure if we had medical scenarios in the northern part of Wilmington, that we could get to those people as quickly as possible in light of having train stations. So, when I look at this, I look at the collective we, and then I look at the collective, you know, illustration of what the town should look like. Coming full circle to being here tonight, I'm supporting both of these projects and the committee recommendations, because I want to put my personal feelings that I believe are rooted in logic, and are rooted in a facilities master plan, but I don't want to be in the way of getting this to the next step, in letting it get to the town meeting floor, so that we can hear from the residents, and let them vote on the merits of these projects now. Because the dollar that we spend today will be more important than the dollar we spend tomorrow, because every day we are increasing the cost of all of these projects. So, I know people are frustrated, there were some kind words that were said about the untile project, I was a part of that, I was a part of a very large team, we ran into delays, we let our OPM go, which a lot of people don't realize, we let go our original OPM and we hired somebody else because the project wasn't moving forward. There were concerns in the beginning end, and we changed directions, and it elongated our project. We had delays at the high school through appeals that cost, you know, a year's worth of time. We've had delays, we've had obstacles to bear, but I think the messaging to the town needs to be positive, that we're collaborating together, we're not going to be unanimous at this table, we're not, we have opposing views. Let it get to the town meeting floor, let the residents vote on it, and that's why I'm moving this forward, even though I do have strong opinions that go against these recommendations, but I'm elected to represent the will of the people, which was to take it from the facilities master plan to the appropriations to get to this point, to eventually get some sort of proposal at town meeting floor to vote these projects in or out. I don't want to see the projects pitted together, I believe they both are worthy, and that they have their rightful merit. I want the seniors to get their senior center, I want the town to have a good school admin building. The Roman House will not stand the test of time, this building is in better shape than that, we got to think about the big picture, and I caution, not supporting that project will make it more expensive, because it's coming, it's just a question when. So, I will stop at this point. I articulated in my previous comments my concerns about the Swain site, for all the reasons that Mr. West stated, plus the reasons that I stated, and what anyone else had to share, and I appreciate the time, but I will, I will be supporting, with reservation personally, both of the recommendations, and once again, I also want to state one more final point. I'm supporting these recommendations if they go as Board of Selectmen-sponsored warrant articles. If there is a resident petition that comes forward that's outside of the recommended timeframe, i.e. trying to put in an article in March, or try and put in an article in April after we've had these discussions that say that we're not ready, I will vote against it, because it's not in line with what we've discussed here tonight. So I don't want to mix words to the public, I am supporting a senior center, I am supporting a town hall, but if it's done in the recommended municipal timeline that's been set forth by all the parties that are involved, if it goes outside of that, and someone tries to sidestep that process, I will take a different decision. So I just want to go on the record in saying that. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Kara?
Yes, thank you for those comments, Selectman O'Connell, I agree with you, up until the point about supporting the site. First off, I want to acknowledge, and I appreciate the work on both committees, without a doubt. Volunteerism is strong in Wilmington, and I want to... Volunteerism is strong in Wilmington, and I want to thank both committees for the work that they put forward, as well as those committee members who put together the Facilities Master Plan. Some of them are on the same committees, I might add. Let me make it clear that I'm supportive of a Senior Center and I'm supportive of a Town Hall School Administration Building. Regarding the Senior Center, I'm just not so sure about the location. I'm supportive of the Facilities Master Plan suggestion of the Senior Center being located here at Town Hall. And I know that Selectman O'Connell didn't want to specify the pages, but I will, Page 19 and Page 40, clearly state that the Senior Center is best here on the site of the Town Hall. It also gave us some facilities evaluation options, that being, which was mentioned, the Town Hall School Administration Site being at the Swain Site, or Option 3 showed it to be at the St. Dorothy's Site. I really believe that when the St. Dorothy's Site was purchased, that it was purchased for a future Town Hall. I, you know, I listened very carefully, I went to the meetings of that November 30th meeting, and I listened to the opinions of the professionals. And our OPM said that the Glen Road Site is the better site with 264 parking spots. He also stated about the traffic, that it's more manageable, it's a better site for traffic on Glen Road, because we cannot deal with Route 38 because it's a state road. I listened to the professionals, at the time the architect who was here, who said that the Glen Road Site is a better site, but the unknown is the Town Hall. So that's what the two professionals said, as well did Judge Hooper, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Bendel, and Town Manager Hall. You know, I look at this site for a Senior Center, and I see the potential of expansion here. I see that it's a quiet site here. There are walking trails already that exist here. It was said to me by a senior, "Oh, you're concerned about walking trails? Don't worry about that, we'll just take some trees down and make a walking trail." I saw by the architect, tonight he put on the board, pickleball courts could be built. Well, we just built pickleball courts for $80,000. So the pickleball courts are here. Someone mentioned at a meeting, "Oh, we can put swing sets so we can bring our grandchildren here." We already have swing sets here. We have a basketball court here. Heck, you could put a pitch and putt if you wanted to, with some sand and a green for the seniors to pitch and putt. The expansion is better here. It was mentioned that Middlesex Ave was just too busy and too hazardous to have a Senior Center. Well, heck, if Middlesex Ave is too busy and too hazardous, what do you think, Route 38 on one side, Glen Road on the other, and then you have cut-throughs with Harden Road and Brattle Street? Talking about a busy, busy area. It was mentioned that we'll put a Pedway up so that the seniors can walk across the street. We won't build a pickleball court, they can walk across the street and play pickleball court. God forbid, coming around that corner, that we're having our seniors walk across the street. It was mentioned, "Build it at the St. Dorothy's Site because our seniors can walk to Market Basket and then come back." Well, that's a, I checked it out, it's a mile, it's a mile walk from St. Dorothy's, so I don't know how many seniors are going to walk to Market Basket and shop and then bring their bags back to their car parked at the Senior Center. I just think logic for me, common sense for me, says to go with the master Facilities Master Plan, which says that this is the best place for a Senior Center, that the Town Hall is best at the Swain Site, but is optional to St. Dorothy's. And most importantly, what was said in the Master Plan, and I had this conversation with Mr. Hooper, I hope you don't mind me saying this, but we discussed about senior housing. I remember that he and I think Valerie Gingrich, the Conservation and Planning, they did videos of the various sites and the potentials. And part of the Master Plan was the potential of senior housing across the street from a Senior Center. And that would be the perfect spot. I think the Archdiocese at the time was even excited to hear that the town was contemplating putting senior housing at St. Dorothy's. So I don't know where we took a left-hand turn from the Facilities Master Plan, but we did. And again, I'm supportive of a Senior Center, just not at the St. Dorothy's location. I think it should be here.
I commend Mr. Kair for his, I commend Mr. Kair for his words, his passionate words, but as I look at it today, the committee has endorsed the site for the Senior Center, and the committee has, the second committee has endorsed the site for the Town Hall School Administration Building. Again, like I said, Mr. Kair did bring up some good points, but still, it's been supported by the committees, and I feel that we should go with the committee on the Senior Center. And I am supporting the Senior Center because the committee has said that's where they want it. Thank you.
Okay. So we have four recommending, one not recommending. Correct? Can we take a vote? Okay. So we'll go to, so we'll take a vote. Let's do a roll call with Beverly on the phone, so she gets it. Judy O'Connell, yes?
Garrett DePome, yes?
Greg Bendel, yes?
Kevin Kyra, no?
Lily Masella, yes. It's four to one, so move.
All right, for the next item under Board to Consider is for the recommendation or the site for construction of a Town School Administration Building. Similar situation here, you'll, everyone knows at this point that the site that's recommended is the Swain Site, and I would be seeking an endorsement to either of that site or another site that the board is inclined to pursue.
An endorsement?
Just the Chair request, has a reference. Could we have Mr. O'Neill put it up on the screen for us, the Swain Green Town Hall Site? Is that possible? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will make, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to endorse the site for construction of a new Town Hall School Administration Building at the Swain School Site.
I'll second that for discussion.
Opened up for discussion?
Yes, I mean, I've already articulated my points. You know, I will freely admit that I'm struggling with these decisions tonight. We don't get elected to waffle back and forth. This is in line with the Facilities Master Plan as one of the options. I respectfully disagree with this being the utmost ideal location. There's no secret that we have a traffic issue in the town based on having four exits off of 93. This area is probably, I understand the idea from an urban planning and development and having a center, but, you know, it's been articulated by multiple people that there are a lot of uses in that particular area. I think that the points that were articulated about having a Senior Center here, the Town Hall School Admin Building at St. Dorothy's, leaving that space open would have dispersed the traffic more evenly throughout the town. I have major concerns about the aesthetics of a multi-story building there, and I think overall that some of the activities that we have come to enjoy over there are going to be compromised as a result of this. So again, I am trying to represent the larger population that I represent as a selectman and get this to the next level, to get it to a point of voting and have a more public process for the residents to weigh in, and taking that approach on this, although I definitely disagree with the site recommendation. So, I appreciate the opportunity to share that.
Discussion. Madam Chair, thank you. Again, it bears repeating, I have great respect for the members of this committee. I wasn't on this committee, but I really appreciate all the work that was done. Many of them are on the committee with me as well. I intend to support Mr. Kair's motion, and let me explain why. I believe, like Ms. O'Connell said, that we ought, we were instructed by Town Meeting, two Town Meetings ago, by the residents of this town to explore both these options. That was a referendum from the residents at Town Meeting for us to do that, and this committee has done, what I believe is its due diligence, a great job of exploring all the options at length, and they've come to this conclusion. I do have some concerns about the site as well. For many of them, that's already been stated, the value in the, all of the different community events that we have. Again, I can't help but think about building into the hill. Does that come with an added cost? Is there ledge inside the hill? I don't know. I wonder about the cost of building into a hill. I wonder what happens to the current basel, if, you know, it's my understanding that we're going to maintain it because it's been, some of it's been renovated and it could be used otherwise, but is it maybe better to put the new Town Hall where the current basel center is so that it's, again, away from the hill, away from the parking lot, away from the actual green? I trust that these things will be explored in the next step of the process, and I remain committed, like others, to make sure that both these projects move forward because that's what we were instructed to do by Town Meeting, I believe it was of June of 2020. And so, I intend to support it. I look forward to seeing the design options. I know this isn't the particular, this isn't set in stone of what it will be, and I, again, I look forward to the opportunity to give some more input, but I believe that the next step should be that the residents decide. And so, again, I appreciate the work of the committee and I intend to support Mr. Kair's motion.
Thank you. Mr. DePome, if you can.
I am not supporting this. I've been approached by a number of people, residents of the town, and they support the Senior Center, but they do not support a Town Hall School Administration Building at this time. So therefore, I will not support this site or the construction of the Town Hall School Administration Building at this time. Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is in line with the Facilities Master Plan, and support of this. It's not ideal for me as well. I think the ideal spot would have been at the St. Dorothy's Site, but this does go along with the Facilities Master Plan. And I do struggle with it because I see that there will be issues at this site. Everybody's noted the Fourth of July. I know that it was talked about, you know, if we did away with the greenery and the lights and, you know, a plow could just plow through and take care of the road, as it is doing now on the open site at the Swain Green, the Swain School Site. But I don't see that that's viable. I think we'll need lights out there. I think we'll need greenery, I think we'll need trees, I think we'll need it as it's shown. So that means that the Fourth of July as we know it is going to change. It's, we may not have a carnival anymore, it may just be some sort of a family festival. But I don't know, I'm not on the Fourth of July Committee, that's up to them to determine how they would be able to utilize that parking lot for, as Mr. West said, many of the local organizations and groups, that's their primary time to raise monies for their charities and for their, for their groups, their Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and so on. The Roman House is not going to survive another two years. Mr. Vergereau out there, Superintendent of School Administration, and I'm sure he can attest to that. Right now, I think the school has a couple of different locations for their administration. They use the old, what is it?
The art center.
The art center for a portion of the, so they're spread out. I mean, that doesn't make for a way to run a school of our size, to have one part of the administration in one area, another one over here in another area. You know, you need some continuity, and you need to have them at a building where it's accessible to everybody. Right now, I did, Roman House isn't accessible, it would probably be hard for me to walk up those stairs with a bum knee and a replacement knee. So, I just think that you come in here, it's not conducive for the staff at Town Hall or the residents when they come in here. It's time for a new Town Hall and School Administration Building. And the site location, according to the Facilities Master Plan, one of them is at the Swain School Site, so I would wholeheartedly endorse that. Thank you.
Thank you. For the discussion before we go. Okay. Motion, as Kevin Ford, roll call please.
It was a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was seconded.
I seconded for discussion. Judy O'Connell, yes?
Garrett DePome, no.
Lily Masella, yes?
Greg Bendel, yes.
Kevin Kyra, yes?
Four to one. Motion approved. Okay, so now we will go back, oh yes, thank you, Mr. Pallada.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hooper, thank you so much for coming in and spending the time this evening. All right, so we'll pick back up with correspondence.
So next, under Correspondence, we have a letter from Kathleen DeCherco, that she is the Executive Administrative Administration Officer for Lowell Five, and she is announcing a donation to the town of Wilmington of $5,000. She indicates that the bank would like to focus these monies towards first responders, including but not limited to emergency rescue, fire, police, and the like. They, you recall, not too long ago made another donation that was applied towards our COVID efforts. Next is a letter from me to the Lowell Five, just extending our thanks for their generous donation. We have, under Correspondence, a memo from Mike Woods, just on a status with regard to PFAS. This is, as you recall, a request of the board to update you on a regular basis. He notes, "The town's water system continues to function properly, all required sampling by..." by regulators being performed. We sample PFAS compounds per directive every month. Last sampling was done on January 5th. Unfortunately, as of today, we didn't have the result back, but we fully expect, as was the case last month, that the PFAS levels are either non-detect or well below the 20 parts per trillion." We have correspondence from Elizabeth Laurinson, who's the Town Clerk, and she just notes the offices that are up for election, for the Board of Selectmen, two slots for three-year terms, School Committee, three slots for three-year terms, Shawshank Regional Tech School Committee, one slot for three-year term, Wilmington Housing Authority, one spot for a five-year term. She also notes nomination packets are available in the Town Clerk's office. As of right now, our polling locations remain precincts one and two, Bowwell School, 17 Bowwell Street, precincts three and four, Wildwood School, 182 Wildwood Street, and precincts five and six, Town Hall, 121 Glen Road. Some of the important dates to bear in mind here in terms of the election cycle, March 4th, the last day to submit papers for the annual town election, March 18th, last day to certify nomination papers for the annual town election, March 22nd, last day to withdraw from the annual town election, April 1st, last day to register to vote, April 15th, last day to post the warrant, and then the town elections are on April 23rd. Polls open at 8:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. We have a memo from me to the Finance Committee and Department Heads in the Board with regard to the Finance Committee meeting schedule. After the presentation to the Board on the January 24th, we start off with Finance Committee meeting on the 25th, which covers a number of general government departments, also various other accounts on classified statutory charges, insurance. Then on the 27th, we have the Planning Board, Planning and Conservation, the Building Inspector, and Board of Appeals, and the Board of Health. Meetings start at 7:00 and run through until close. Tuesday, February 1st, Department of Public Works and Department of Public Buildings, again, the meeting time is 7:00 p.m. All these meetings are held here in Room 9 at the Town Hall. Thursday, the 3rd, Veteran Services and Elderly Services, again, 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, February 8th, Police Department, Public Safety, Central Dispatch, and Fire, 7:00 p.m. start. Thursday, the 10th of February, Public Library, Recreation Historical, 7:00 o'clock start time. Thursday, February 17th, Town Clerk and Information Technology, same time start. Tuesday, March 1, Wilmington Public School, 7:00 p.m. And then the 3rd is the Shawshank Tech, just at 7:00 p.m. Then the, there's also a number of dates that are listed, key dates, advertising dates that lead up to the April 30th town meeting. Next is correspondence from Paul Shalifor, and this is directed to the Board. He's expressing some concerns about the construction activity that's going on on Darby Lane, which is the new development on Hopkins Street, almost on the Berwicka Line. He had requested that the, actually, to be on tonight's agenda. I had indicated to him I anticipated to be a heavy agenda. As, as it turns out, subject to the Chair's approval, he would be slated to appear before the Board on the 24th of January, and he wants to address some of his concerns. These have been, we've had discussions internally about this, and I would expect Department Heads, appropriate Department Heads, to be prepared to address those concerns.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question on this?
Yes.
If I may, I understand that we're running long, but just seeking to understand, not directed at the parties that are involved, just as a general knowledge standpoint, is it, is it usual and customary for this to be handled this way in terms of the Board of Selectmen, agenda topic? You know, this, we get resident letters all the time. What is the deciding criteria that some, I mean, residents can come in under public comments and make comments, they can ask questions. How do you delineate, just for the knowledge of the public, when something becomes an agenda item? There's other things that we've received communications that express issues that never see an agenda, and I have, I have no bias to this, I want to be, be clear on that. I'm more just wanting to understand how these are handled, just because residents have concerns all the time. So we want to take those seriously, we want to give people internally an opportunity to respond. You know, are you letting all parties know that this is a subject matter that could be brought forth, subject to the Chairwoman's approval, to be an agenda item? Is, is there going to be a full investigation of any of these issues in the letter, such that all of those answers are going to be prepared prior to this being on the agenda? I'm just truly trying to understand. Like I said, it doesn't matter what the subject matter is or who the parties that are involved, just trying to understand what, how something fits in what bucket, if you will, public comment, a general memo to the Board. Is it even in our purview? And I'll, I'll pause so you can respond.
So typically, as was the case here, you know, we attempt through the various Department Heads to address the issues and have done so in, in this case, without getting into a great deal of detail, but certainly there have been discussions with Mr. Shalifor, with departments, including Engineering and Planning and Fire Department, and in fact, in some cases, multiple discussions. Apparently, the, the discussions were not satisfactory. This, as was noted in the January 3rd letter, it was actually addressed to the Administrative Assistant, it was looking to be on the agenda with the Board. Typically, we don't get these types of requests, you know, we're able to deal with them administratively and, and work out the issues, so this is somewhat of a, a unique circumstance.
I want to be clear, you know, I'm all for doing what's right and, and putting it on as an agenda item. I just wanted to know how those decisions are made, because we've gotten letters expressing concerns, and they haven't been an agenda item. So just for the public's knowledge, if they're requested to be on an agenda, it, it goes to consideration to the Chairperson at the time, and he or she makes that judgment call as to whether or not they're going to let it on. Is that fair to say?
I think that's, that's true. I think it's certainly the Chair's call as to whether this is a, a, an appointment or taken up under public comments. Yeah, and I think it, you know, it depends upon the particular circumstances, so, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I want, like I said, I want to do the right thing, but I, everything we do can set a precedence and, you know, take an agenda and make it multiple pages going forward, but I, I want to not be mistaken and just get a snippet of what I'm saying. I want this resident to be served well and to have any concerns addressed and rectified, and if there needs to be process improvements or corrections, they certainly should be done. But I definitely just think, you know, wanting, wanting to understand the process and that all parties are going to be informed that this is taking place.
Madam Chair, just, I, I don't want to play your point, but on these issues that have been pointed out to us, I, I believe, Mr. Manager, you mentioned that some of these have already been addressed, or they've been looked at, or they've been, you know, when we get, you know, that information as to what was addressed and what was handled and what was, so that we know what, so I look at the earth removal or the blasting, is that something that we usually sign off on? I know that when companies come here for earth removal, we're signing them to allow to take, to do that. So if there's earth removal, did we sign that?
No, in this case, there, there was not an earth removal permit that was requested, and that's one of the issues that Mr. Shalifor has raised. He has reason to believe that the amount of earth that was removed exceeded the bylaw amount of, I believe it's 450 cubic yards, and, and believes that the town should have taken action on that. You know, I can't personally say, I haven't been there on a day-to-day basis to know how many trucks are leaving there, nor have any of our staff. One of the challenges, you know, again, without getting into the particulars, is that we don't have the bandwidth to have people stationed at these developments from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night, you know, seven days a week. You know, there's, but...
No, totally understandable, but when I see blasting down here, I would think if there's blasting in my neighborhood, I'm going to call someone up and say, "What's going on?" And I would hope that someone from the town would respond to it and find out if that was justified, illegal. I mean, I don't know.
Yes, and, and certainly, I don't want to, you know, leave the impression that because of what's stated here, there's a lack of responsiveness on the part of departments. I've had conversations with the departments that would have been involved, certainly in the case of blasting, that comes under the jurisdiction of the Fire Department in terms of the permitting and, and having someone on site, and from my discussions, it's my understanding that the proper permitting was obtained and that, and that there was someone from the department on site when the blasting occurred. So again, I think it's, and we'll be looking to respond to these points and, and get some information to the Board prior to the meeting, and I would anticipate having the appropriate staff here at the meeting to be able to respond to these points.
Thank you.
Next, under Communications, is a, an update from Minuteman Senior Services. This comes in once a year, and it's from Kelly Maggie Wright, and she provides information about the services that were provided to seniors, litany of services provided over the last fiscal year to our senior residents. Next is, let's see, under Board to Consider. This one is the license for electronic, electric charging stations. You'll recall, this has been brought up in the past. We, through the efforts of Reading Municipal Light, have the opportunity to have two charging stations, one to be located at the library and the other to be located here at the Town Hall. The RMLD has created a, a license agreement which has been approved by the town of Reading, and it's, this agreement is a template agreement. They're seeking to have the agreement approved by the town of Wilmington. As is customary, I would have these agreements, license agreements reviewed by council, except that in this case, because RMLD is a client of KP, there was a conflict, and as a consequence, my second step was to contact the Town of Reading Council on the premise that if they've looked at RMLD's, Reading's license, that they could do the same for us. Unfortunately, they're also conflicted, so my third option was to obtain from RMLD's, Reading Light Council's, a recommendation as to another firm that we could consult with, also, which happens to be Patrini and Associates, ran the names of the council by Mark Rich, our town council, he's worked with them before, is familiar with them. I did talk with this gentleman, Chris Brown, who's one of the attorneys in the firm. He notes that he has, or his firm has reviewed a couple of these licenses for the city of Framingham, so it would be my recommendation that the Board of Selectmen authorize as special counsel for the purpose of reviewing this license agreement to just confirm that there's no language in here that would be problematic for the town's interests, that, that, that council be named as special counsel. There was prior discussion at a meeting, notwithstanding the fact that RMLD has agreed to pay for the costs, the directive was made that, that the town pay for these services, pay directly to the firm, which we can certainly do, and I would suggest that, subject to the Board's response, that we still pursue reimbursement from RMLD for the time associated with any review that might be done or any negotiation that might need to take place if there are terms that need to be modified. My expectation is that this may be a couple of hours' worth of work, if that, but I, I don't think it's going to be significant.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the Board authorize the appointment of Patrini and Associates as special counsel for the sole purpose of reviewing the terms of the license, and if necessary, negotiating any change in terms to ensure that the license is in the best interest of the town. And in this motion, I would have the Board authorize that the town of Wilmington remit payment for these services, and at the conclusion of those services being rendered, seek reimbursement from Reading Municipal Light at the appropriate time.
Second.
Favor roll call, please.
A discussion.
Oh, sorry, sorry, discussion.
Just in that regard about seeking reimbursement from the RMLD, should we put a caveat that we will not move forward with the electric charging stations unless we get reimbursement from RMLD? I mean, I know she stated it at a meeting that they would do that.
I'd modify my motion, I'd modify my motion to support that.
My second stands.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor by roll call, please.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Garrett Palmer, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Kevin Kyra, yes.
Lily Muselli, yes. Janice.
All right, next, under Board to Consider, is the, let me pull it up here. This is the special, this is the authorization of the order to, order of taking property located at 64 Wildwood Street. So I would entertain a motion from the Board pursuant to the vote taken under Article 22 of the June 22nd, 2020 Annual Town Meeting, to take by eminent domain for cemetery purposes the fee and to the parcel and any improvements thereon located at 64 Wildwood Street in Wilmington, Middlesex County, Massachusetts, and that the Board of Selectmen execute an order of taking for said taking and to award damages for said taking in the amount of $450,000.
Make a motion to accept.
I have a second.
I'll second that motion based upon the description of our town manager.
Okay.
With second for discussion.
Yep.
I think, in my opinion, I think it makes sense for Jeff, if you would be willing, as the town manager, to make a brief statement as to why we're doing this, in case someone is looking at this meeting as a snapshot in time and doesn't have a bit of back history as to why we are ordering this taken. I think it's important for public interest and transparency and just making sure that we're not sending the wrong message, that we're just in the business of taking property. Thank you.
Certainly, I, I think that's a, a great point. I would just provide some history here. The town has been interested in acquiring this piece of property for quite some time, and it really all started back in December of 2018. At the time, Mike Woods, the Public Works Director, myself, met with the trustee of the property, Mr. Robert Brown, and indicated that we were interested in the property for cemetery expansion. As many of you know, we are approaching the, the limits of the existing space we have, and, and you'll recall that one of the efforts that Mr. Woods has put forward is the establishment of the, a couple of things, the columbariums, which allow for a different approach to... of the, a couple of things, the columbariums, which allow for a different approach to persons' remains, as well as the garden, and the name escapes me now, but the, another means to honor those who have passed. But all that said, the effort was, we still are looking to expand the existing footprint of the cemetery. So, we met on, I think it was December 4th, thereabouts, of 18. Mr. Brown said he would take the matter under advisement. Since that time, there have been multiple communications via letter from me, phone calls, some emails in there, really from 2018 all the way through until this past fall, when town council attempted to reach out, again, within the spirit of trying to work collaboratively and reach some kind of a mutually beneficial agreement. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, there was no response, except for one, just one limited instance where I think I caught him by surprise on the phone and indicated he would get, would meet with me at a later date, which ultimately never happened. So, certainly, eminent domain is a last resort effort that the town wants to take on any property, but certainly, as the record would show, there's been multiple efforts to engage in a conversation, and we just have not been able to do that. So, as a last resort, and I would add that, I guess about six months ago or so, a town, we had a conversation about pursuing the matter at that time, and I think the Board rightfully deferred, given the circumstances at that time. And so, in light of the fact that we have not, in spite of multiple efforts, been able to engage any communication, this is where we are.
Also, too, if I may ask, just for clarification for the public, is it fair to say that that building, that it is there as a dormant state and is not occupied at this point?
That's, to the best of my knowledge, that is correct.
I think that's important, so we're not putting a family out on the street by this taking.
That's right.
To our knowledge, it's a vacant structure.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, make a motion, accept.
Motion's already been made.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. O'Connell made the motion, Mr. Karas.
All right, no discussion, I apologize. Roll call, please.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Gary DePommey, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Lilly Maselli, yes.
Next, under Board to Consider, is the calling of a special town meeting for Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, at 7:00 PM at the Shriners Auditorium, 99 Fordham Road, for the purpose of authorizing funds for the completion of a feasibility study to consider replacement of the Wildwood Early Childhood Center located at 182 Wildwood Street. The Board recalls that this has been discussed now for some period of time. We are currently in the eligibility period with the MSBA. That period runs 270 days and expires on March 28th of this current year. So, within that 270 days, the last major step that the town needs to take in order to remain eligible for financial assistance is to appropriate funds for a feasibility study to evaluate options that might include various configurations, whether it be pre-K to three, pre-K to five, or other associated options. So, the date that I'm recommending, and I think previously the Board had agreed with, was that the town meeting, the special town meeting, be set for March 8th. As you recall, there was some initial discussion about the prospect of having this meeting at the high school auditorium. Certainly, that would be the desire, but given the circumstances that we're in, as everyone knows right now with COVID and its various variants, I think the more prudent approach would be to have this meeting at the Shriners Auditorium, as we did more recently here. We have, would have the adequate space to socially distance and keep those that may be attending as safe as possible.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second? Any discussion?
Discussion.
I was gonna, so I was gonna make a motion to call special town meeting for Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, at 7:00 PM at the Shriners Auditorium, 99 Fordham Road, for the purpose of authorizing funds for the completion of a feasibility study to consider the replacement of the Wildwood Early Childhood Center located at 182 Wildwood Street.
Second. Any discussion?
Yep.
Please, I just want to recognize that our town moderator is here, appreciate him being here for this discussion.
All right, roll call, please.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Gary DePommey, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Lilly Maselli, yes. Anonymous. Anonymous. Anonymous, I'm tired.
Next is the Board to Consider Formerly Opening the Warrant for the Special Town Meeting for March 8th, 2022, and to Consider a Closing Date for the Warrant. And with regard to this, certainly, this will, you know, set in motion the process for establishing the town meeting. And the Board, as you recall, actually relatively recently, there was a petition, special town meeting that was, the Board called last year, and the Board, at that time, opened and closed the warrant in the same meeting. My suggestion is the Board do the same in this instance, and I would suggest that, you know, the real focus should be on addressing this requirement that we have with the MSBA. We're essentially seven and a half weeks out, or we would be between March 8th and April 30th, from the annual town meeting, and I'm not aware of anything that is so emergent that it couldn't be dealt with at the, at the annual town meeting.
Just as a point of clarification, opening and closing it in the same night, does that prohibit the possibility of constituent petition articles being allowed?
Yes, that would, that would, that would prohibit additional articles.
I'll offer a motion.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll offer a motion that we open the warrant for the special town meeting for March 8th, 2022, and we consider this evening for closing the date today, January 10th, 2022, for the closing date of the warrant.
I would approve that motion, just to confirm, I heard what you said, but that we would open it on March 8th, 2022, and close it on March 8th, 2022.
I think you mean to consider our closing date this evening.
I stand corrected.
Okay. It's okay, I just want to know if you want to omit the word "consider" and just call it.
Right.
Yes, please.
Yep. Got it. So, I would second that for an open and close of today's date.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
As of today's date, right? Opening and closing today.
Right.
Correct?
That would, that would be my recommendation, that the Board open and close today.
It's opening warrant today.
Perhaps I'll restate my motion, clarify, thank you.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, I want to be clear that it's open and closed tonight.
I apologize. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to restate this. I would make a motion that we open and close the warrant for the March 8th, 2022, special town meeting today, January 10th, 2022. Open and close today, January 10th, 2022.
Any second. Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Gary DePommey, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Lilly Maselli, yes.
All right, next is the Board to Consider the Ratification of Town Manager Appointment of Joseph A. Jackson as a member of the Historical Commission for a term to expire on April 30th, 2022. This was a term that was vacated some months ago, and this gentleman has expressed interest. I think he's, as I understand it, very actively involved in looking at family histories and has done some work on his own in town here, so I highly recommend the Board ratify this appointment.
I'll make a motion for the ratification of the town manager's appointment of Joseph A. Jackson as a member of the Historical Commission for the term to expire April 30th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Gary DePommey, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Lilly Maselli, yes.
I'd ask the Board to consider the request of Kristin Knivari, President of Wilmington Farmers Market Association, to use the Swain Green to conduct the farmers market on Sundays beginning June 2nd, 2022, through October 2nd, 2022, starting at 10:00 AM, closing at 1:00 PM, and to use the Yentile Farm Recreation Facility on Sunday, July 3rd, 2022. As you recall in the past, this has been the, at least the recent past, the practice with the expectation that there's a July 4th activity, events going on that Sunday.
Yep.
I'll move to grant the request.
Second for discussion.
Yep.
Discussion relative to the July 3rd date, just for a point of information, has it been confirmed that there are no major conflicts in terms of any sort of tournaments or athletic events that would be existing with the limited parking spaces that are there at Yentile if you have games going on in the turf field, plus the farmers market during that time period? Are you going to have a potential traffic issue on major roadways where if we had a Fourth of July celebration, that the deployment of our town resources are going to be heavily concentrated in another area? And if we have to mitigate any circumstances, will we have the personnel to cover all the needs?
I do not know whether there are activities on the athletic field on July 3rd, so I would have to check on that.
Or maybe I could suggest if, if there's any sort of communication about parking alternatives, whether we have any sort of enabling conversation with whoever terrists to see maybe if they're not in operation, if you could have parking privileges at that site for that particular day, and/or safe passage from some of the tennis court area, if this parking space is there. I don't recall the sidewalk, if there, I don't know that there's a sidewalk that comes all the way up, but just, I don't want to be an obstructionist in trying to make this happen for them, but I just want to anticipate any potential issues that, that day.
Right, so I would suggest perhaps the Board consider authorizing this, subject to any conflicts that may exist with tournaments or other events going on on that space. Well, I can check that out.
Sure, this one. So, I would, I would...
My motion remains, thank you, as amended.
Okay. Excuse me, roll call.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Gary DePommey, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Lilly Maselli, yes.
Next is a Board to Consider Request of Deanna DiGiorio, President of Wilmington Community Fund, to use the municipal parking lot on Saturday, September 24th, 2022, from 9:00 AM to noon, for the purpose of a community shredding event.
Move to grant the request.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Gary DePommey, yes.
Lilly Maselli, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
So moved. Okay, now we will go on to any announcements, sorry, public comments, which I don't think we have, and any announcements. It's right under my foot, I keep hitting it, got to tape it down after this. Okay, and, oh yeah, sorry.
Just two quick ones, I promised I would give them a shout out, but there's a group of kids, you may have noticed already, that live near the lake and they spend almost year round cleaning up trash. They were working on it just last week, I saw it with my own eyes. Bags and bags of trash off the lake, off the beaches. I hope they're not out there this week, because it's going to be too cold, but I really appreciate that. There's about a half dozen of them that do it all the time, they fill up bags and line them up, and they're doing it year round, just volunteering to try to keep the beaches nice in the surrounding area. So, shout out to them, because those young kids, most of them are elementary and middle school kids.
That's amazing.
They're doing an awesome job, I appreciate them, we all do. And then, secondly, I don't see it here on important dates, but I want to remind everybody that tomorrow night, January 11th, is the MSBA meeting for the Wildwood School. There's an open house at the Wildwood from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. All members of the community are welcome to come and see the facility. After that, there will be a 7:00 PM meeting, the third meeting of the MSBA committee will take place right there at the Wildwood. So, again, I know it's going to be cold out, but everyone is welcome to attend tomorrow night, Tuesday, January 11th, at the Wildwood Elementary, 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And of course, you're welcome to join us for the meeting, but the open house takes place from 6:00 to 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any new business?
Madam Chair, just a couple. Sorry about that. Just two items, both of them have been, I'm a little disappointed that we've not heard from the town manager, how regarding the assistant superintendent, the assistant town manager, or an assistant clerk. I hear through various sources that an assistant town manager has been hired, that an assistant town clerk has been hired, but I haven't, unless my colleagues can correct me, I haven't received any notification in our packet. So, just a little disappointing that we haven't received it, and I'm hearing it from second, third, fourth-hand sources that there's been a hire, and those are two very significant hires. I'm not suggesting that all the hires you make, that you notify us, but especially an assistant town manager, I would hope that we would have, I don't even know the individual's name, or, so I just, if you could communicate that to us.
Yeah, absolutely, and clearly it was my intent to try to keep that information. The, the process that we go through, you know, once I've made an offer, is there's a pre-employment process, and that hadn't been fully, I didn't have the results from that prior to, I think, the last, well, I think I just got the results here in the last, last week or so, so that's why I had not made any public statements about it, but I certainly will get a memo out to the Board this week. With the assistant town clerk, yes, I did appoint Megan Jones to that position. She had been serving as the senior clerk in the office, you know, doing a very good job, and as a consequence, that the recommendation of Beth Lawrenson, she was appointed as the assistant town clerk. So, my apologies for not providing the Board with a memo on that.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll move on to important dates.
So, through January 14th, curbside collection of Christmas trees. January 12th is the next senior center building committee, Town Hall, Room 9. This may or may not be a virtual meeting, but it remains to be seen. January 17th, Martin Luther King Day, offices are closed. January 18th, the Economic Development Committee meeting is virtual, 6:00 PM. January 19th, Town School Admin Building Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, at this point, 6:00 PM. January 24th, first COVID, first dose COVID pediatric vaccination clinic, ages 5 to 11, and the booster at the middle school, 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. January 24th is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting here at Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM, where I will be giving the fiscal '23 budget presentation. Sounds like we may have some other items on the agenda as well. January 25th, Finance Committee, Room 9, 7:00 PM, Fiscal '23 Budget Overview, Revenues and General Government. On the 26th, another senior center building committee meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 PM. January 27th, Finance Committee, Room 9, 7:00 PM, Planning and Conservation, Building Inspector, Board of Appeals, and Board of Health, 7:00 PM. February 1st, another Finance Committee meeting, Room 9, 7:00 PM, Department of Public Works and Public Buildings. February 2nd, Town School Admin Building Committee, Room 9, Town Hall, 6:00 PM. February 3rd, Finance Committee, Room 9... Committee, Room 9, 7:00 PM. Veteran Services and Elementary Services. February 4, last day to submit petition warrant articles for inclusion on the warrant for the annual town meeting, which is April 30, 2022. February 8 is the Finance Committee meeting, Room 9, 7:00 PM. Police, Public Safety, and Fire. February 9, Senior Center Building Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 PM. February 10, Finance Committee meeting, Room 9, 7:00 PM. Library, Rec, and Historical Commission. February 14 is Board of Selectmen's meeting, Room 9, 7:00 PM. February 16, Town Hall, Town School Admin Building Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 PM. February 17, Finance Committee, Room 9, 7:00 PM. Town Clerk, NIT. February 23 is the Senior Center Building Committee, Room 9, Town Hall, 6:00 PM. February 28 is a Board of Selectmen's meeting, Room 9, 7:00 PM. March 1, Finance Committee, Room 9, 7:00 PM. Wilmington Public Schools. March 3, Finance Committee, Room 9, 7:00 PM. Chastain Regional Technical District.
Thank you. And now we go to Selectmen Bendel for our salute to service.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, it's my privilege to present tonight's salute to service to James M. Kent, Sr., Gunner's Mate and Petty Officer, 3rd Class of United States Navy. He served from March of 1965 to November of 1968, served in Vietnam, and as a result, received the Vietnam Service Medal with four Bronze Stars, National Defense Medal, Vietnam Campaign Medal, Combat Action Ribbon, a unit commendation, a Republic of Vietnam unit citation. And if you have ever been around our Veteran Service Office, you've probably seen Mr. Kent there. He's a huge help with everything that goes on with the events and just day-to-day operations volunteering in our community. For those reasons and many more, we salute him for his service to our community and to our country. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kent. Appreciate your service. We will be adjourning this meeting and going into, oh, I'm sorry, did you have some? Okay. And going into a executive session.
Not to return.
Not to return. I would entertain a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 1370, in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, and further to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or other acquisition of real property at 333 Eandover Street, in accordance with, with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6. As an open meeting, we have a detrimental effect on the town's position, and further to conduct negotiations with non-union personnel, town manager, pursuant to MGL Chapter 21A 2, and that upon completion of the executive session, the Board will adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion? Second. Thank you. Roll call.
Judy O'Connell, yes?
Garrett DiPaolo, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes?
Lilly Maselli, yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.